Accession of the January 19th meeting of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors. Meeting is now called to order. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Bomke?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mrs. Mauer?
Here.
Mr. Melday? Ms. Sellers?
Here.
Mr. Snelling?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Larry Ingles to the dais up here. Mr. Ingles has served on the BZA, that's the Board of Zoning Appeals, during a great time of change in Stafford County. We were just talking about the two-lane roads that he remembers and kind of where we're at today. He served for more than 34 years, from 1981 to 2015. His most recognized contribution was the fact that he's an engineer in his day job, so he was able to bring that, that flavor of expertise to the BZA. He held many positions and helped guide the county through very difficult growth decisions. For someone like me, it's, it's hard to sit here and really put some weight to what 34 years of service is. I don't mean it in a negative way, that I wasn't in kindergarten yet, but that kind of gives you an idea of how long you've been serving the community, and you don't get paid to do it. You do it because it's the right thing, and you do it because you love the community. So, the board wanted to give you a proclamation to honor that service. Whereas Larry Ingles served on the Board of Zoning Appeals for 35 years, from 1981 until 2015, a time of tremendous growth and change in Stafford County; and whereas Mr. Ingles served as Secretary, Vice Chairman, and Chairman during his time on the BZA; and whereas Mr. Ingles earned a Board of Zoning Appeals certification from Plan Virginia for taking a course that provided an overview of zoning in Virginia and the role the BZA takes in deciding issues involving zoning decisions; and whereas his expert knowledge of engineering and his calm temperament greatly helped the BZA in their often difficult decision-making process; and whereas Mr. Ingles was co-owner of Sullivan, Donahoe, and Ingles, a well-regarded local engineering firm from 1971 until his retirement in 2008. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 19th day of January 2016, that it be and hereby does recognize and command Larry Ingles for his years of service on the Stafford County Board of Zoning Appeals and his dedication to serving the citizens of Stafford County.
It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Stafford County. As you know, the Board of Zoning Appeals is appointed by the Circuit Court Judges and on the recommendation of the Board of Supervisors. When I was recommended in 1981, Toji Payne, his son is sitting back there in the back, was the Chairman along with Hansford Abel, GW Embry, Alvin Bandi, I think it's Charles Warwick and Jim, maybe it was Jim Warwick or Charles Warwick, one of those two, and it was six of them. And at the time, we only had five members.
We met.
We met in the old courtroom, in the old courthouse over there. And actually, the Freelance Star would send a reporter every month to our meeting and every, we met on Tuesday night, and on Wednesday they usually have a short article about us. And in the last 30 years, they don't even pay any attention to us. As my wife came one time, she only came twice in 35 years to our meeting, and she, the last time she came, she said, "I'm not coming back because you are boring." But the BZA, most of our cases, we're serving individual Stafford County citizens that want to come before and seek variances and special exceptions from the zoning ordinance. And so, we're really dealing with just one-on-one for most of our issues, and we don't have that many county issues that affect the county as a whole. So, we really dealt one-on-one, and I tried my very best to make the right decision. I don't know how many decisions I made. I figured it's somewhere between 500 and 1,000 decisions that we made in 35 years. But you don't make those decisions and do that and stay on this, on a board as long as that, without having good support, one from the Board of Supervisors. I look around at all these pictures. I've served under everybody in this room, and I noticed there's a couple that are not in this room that I have served under. But you have to have a good board behind you. They sued the Board of Zoning Appeals a couple times over our decisions over 35 years, but most of the time, we were in agreement. And then, you've got to have a good staff, and I want to thank the current staff of zoning who comes and supports us at our meetings and gives us our package. They do a super job, and I would certainly like to thank them for their service to us. And you don't also do this without having other good board members. Over the years, I've had a lot of good board members, and a few have come to see me often today. I assume they're either glad to get me out of here and will make sure I'm leaving, but I appreciate them and all they've done and their expertise in helping me make good decisions for all the people. So, I leave you in good hands with the good board, and I thank you, thank you.
Next, we'd like to welcome Mr. Ray Davis. Mr. Davis has just concluded a term on the BZA, during which time he helped navigate difficult zoning decisions regarding certain violations, appeals, and special exceptions. But Mr. Davis also served as the Stafford County General Registrar from 1987 through 2007. One of the things it doesn't say here is Stafford County is known throughout the Commonwealth now for having some of the most fair, efficient, and professional elections anywhere in the Commonwealth. And whenever we go to association meetings, we hear things like that. And certainly, Mr. Riddlemoser, the current Registrar, deserves a lot of that credit, but his predecessors, over the years, have put him in a really good situation and given him a good office to take over, so certainly thank you for that as well. We have a proclamation. Says, "Whereas Mr. Ray Davis is concluding his service on the Board of Zoning Appeals after serving from January 2009 to December 2015; and whereas Mr. Davis earned a BZA certification from Plan Virginia for taking a course that provided an overview of zoning in Virginia and the role the BZA takes in deciding issues involving zoning decisions; and whereas Mr. Davis demonstrated thoughtful consideration and deliberation in the often difficult decision-making process of the BZA regarding appeals of the zoning administrator, determinations, zoning violations, special exceptions for home businesses, as well as variances for zoning ordinances; and whereas Mr. Davis is also commended for his service to Stafford County as its General Registrar from 1987 through 2007 and was a member of the redistricting committee in 1990 and again in 2000. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 19th day of January 2016, that it be and hereby does recognize and command Ray Davis for his dedication and service to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the citizens of Stafford County."
Since I haven't been on the board as long as Larry, don't expect a long speech from me, but I would like to say that I appreciate the opportunity to serve the citizens of Stafford County. There are a lot of volunteers that do a lot of good work in Stafford County, and I also congratulate the Board of Supervisors for their volunteer work and all the other volunteers in the county that try to make the county as good as it is and better. And I also wish to thank the three ladies in the back row back there who do a great job for the staff and providing us the information that we needed to make these decisions. Thank you.
Next, we'll have presentations by the public. At this time, we'd like to invite members of the public who wish to address the board to do so. Each person will have three minutes to deliver their comments. We ask that when you come to the podium, you state your name and address, and when you begin your talk, you'll see the green light indicating three minutes. When you see the yellow light, that means you have one minute remaining, and when you see the red light, that means your time is expired. Anyone on my right wish to address the board? Anyone on the left? Seeing none, we will close presentations by the public. Next, we have committee reports by board members.
Mr. Cavalier?
Thank you. I have a few events to pass along that I attended, some with other board members here. First of all, the VDOT meeting that was held last week at Monqueer Elementary School. It took into account three different projects that is going to be done along the 610 corridor, and those improvements should greatly enhance the traffic flow in that area. It was very well-attended, one of the biggest ones I've been to in a long time. It's a good turnout. I think Ms. Mauer was there, Ms., what's her name, Laura? Ms. Sellers? And Mr. Melday. Also, then, last week, we had a joint FAB Finance and Budget Committee meeting with the schools, where they presented there the school CIP. And they had some somewhat significant changes that they wanted to pass along to us. So, we'll be undergoing some closer look at that as we progress through the budget cycle here this year. And then, today, we had a Finance and Budget meeting where we got a mid-year review for 2016 that Nancy Collins gave, that she will give the entire board here shortly. And last but not least, I attended a grand opening of, they call it Block Advisors now. It was the old H&R Block, but now they're known as Block Advisors. It's an upgrade, so. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mrs. Mauer?
Attended a couple of events over the last couple of weeks. First, I'd like to give my heartfelt congratulations and appreciation to our 14 new firefighters that I attended that graduation. It was an incredibly moving speech, and it's wonderful to see these individuals that have been hired to join our county. In addition to that, and it should be noted, that we had, out of 798 applicants, they chose 14 that graduated from this academy. So, we can be well-comfortated to know that we have the best of the best that have just joined our, our team here in Stafford. Also, I attended the VAKO New Supervisor Orientation down in Richmond, and the most, it was well worth the trip. I learned a lot, but most importantly, what, what I seem to take for granted here in Stafford County, our relationship with the schools and the way we run our business here, was actually head and shoulders above some of our other jurisdictions. And so, we have, we have a great staff, we have a great team, and it was, it was really eye-opening to see how well we work together in comparison to some of our other jurisdictions. And so, what I thought was, was very logical and easy to, to see that we do it a certain way here in Stafford, turned out to be great ideas in other jurisdictions. So, I want to commend my board members on, on that, and I also want to commend our staff. Also, attended the Joint Finance and Budget, and happy to, to say that I'm really enjoying my first meeting on, on the Finance and Budget Committee, so I want to thank my colleagues for that. And attended the grand opening of Alpha. It's a new Mediterranean sort of fast food, right there on 610. It was well-attended. There were a ton of people there, and it looks like they're off to a great start. So, I want to welcome them to, to Stafford County. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Melday? Ms. Sellers?
The Legislative Committee met today. Seems like we're pretty much on par. We'll meet again on Friday to give you guys an update on what's going on in the General Assembly. Public Safety also met. We are addressing the firefighters and pretty much the influx of turnover rate that we're seeing this year. And that's all I have.
Mr. Snelling?
I'll defer.
Ms. Bomke?
Only have one item. I actually attended the One Virginia 2021 event at the Falmouth Fire Department, and I'd never been to one of these meetings before, but this was all about redistricting in the state. If anybody's interested, their website is called OneVirginia2021. The 2021 stands for when the General Assembly hopes to vote on the redistricting. I thought it was very interesting that the state of Virginia is the last state in the nation to actually do redistricting. And as we all know, it's very controversial. You know, the Democrats say the Republicans gerrymander, the Republicans say the Democrats, and it's, but as you look at the maps in the state of Virginia, it's everybody. Everybody has gerrymandered. And when you look at some of the political districts, it's really unbelievable how they have been gerrymandered. You couldn't draw these lines yourself if you wanted to. So, anyway, I'm just hoping that with this process, we can have a more transparent redistricting process, and if you're interested, go to that website. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out for the public that we had a couple of supervisors that were promoted to leadership roles on our committees. Ms. Sellers is now the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, and Mr. Cavalier was selected as the Chair of the Finance and Budget Committee. In addition, we had a library board meeting, a regional library board meeting. And many of you probably know Martha Hutzel, who was the, in charge of the library down in South Stafford. She was actually selected unanimously to lead the entire regional board, regional library system, so that's a great feather in the cap for Stafford County, but she actually made the decision very easy. She, she interviewed very well. She's from the system, and she knows it, so I think the library's in very good hands. I attended the North Stafford Rotary. Mr. Melday was there as well. It's a very, very informed group of people. They don't ask easy questions. They ask the hard questions, so it was a very engaging night, and it's good to know that citizens are paying attention to everything we do, and they're watching to make sure that the decisions we make are in the best interest of the community. So, I appreciated being invited out for that. Attended VRE with Mr. Melday as well. And then, one last comment, as I left my house this morning to go out and feed the sheep, the dangerously cold weather we had this morning kind of reminded me of our Team Stafford members who just run out there and do their job, whether it's 2:00 in the morning or, or it's nice and warm. You know, we have people in fire and rescue that don't hesitate to get out there in the cold and do their job. We have deputies that are, you know, patrolling around the clock, facilities and park staff that are making sure that the, the facilities that you see here are ready to go. And of course, our school bus drivers. I thought, you know, I remember starting up that diesel engine and waiting 20 minutes for it to warm up, so I just wanted all those people to know that the board does know the sacrifice you do, and you don't hesitate to do your job. We appreciate that. However, maybe at the end of the week, we'll be relying on you to step that game up even more. So, I think if Mother Nature sends us a curveball, I know Team Stafford is ready to go.
Okay, next, we'll have report of the county attorney.
Before any comments, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Next, we'll have a report of the county administrator.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'd ask Mr. Hoppy and Mr. Rapp to come up for their monthly construction reports, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Christopher Rapp, Director of Public Works. I am pleased to provide the following road construction update. Mountain View Road Phase 2, the contractor has finished the punch list and is waiting for VDOT final acceptance. Mountain View Road Phase 1, the final paving has been complete, and the contractor is working on the punch list. Poplar Road Phase 1 and 2, the contractor has finished the punch list and is waiting for VDOT final acceptance. Centerport Parkway, the, once again, the contractor for that project has opened up the roadway and is waiting for VDOT final acceptance. Poplar Road and Mountain View Road intersection, the negotiations continue with the two remaining property owners, and we're getting cost proposals for the utility relocations. Brook Road, Dominion Virginia Power has been performing a utility relocation, and Verizon will go out as soon as Dominion finishes. We're also working on a draft MOU to relocate the fiber optic line. Trusslow Road, the contractor's been working on the cul-de-sac at Old Trusslow Road. They've been laying drainage pipe and water line. There is a closure scheduled on Lyons Boulevard tomorrow and Thursday of this week for installation of a drainage crossing. The closure was coordinated with VDOT, Fire Rescue, Sheriff, and Schools. And there has been message boards on the roadway alerting drivers of the upcoming closure. And then, lastly, on Garrisonville Road, we had the Pardon Our Dust meeting last week. Certificates of Take were filed for 16 properties. However, we, however, we have had some additional purchase agreements signed, and we continue to negotiate with those property owners. Utility relocations are scheduled to begin later this month, and that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Rapp? Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chris Hoppy, Capital Improvement Program Manager, to give you a report on parks project status. The Jeff Ross Swim and Sports Center, the interior HVAC equipment duct and sprinkler piping is complete. Interior painting continues. The above, as the above-ceiling inspections are completed, the ceiling tiles are dropped into place. The installation of the gas line by Columbia Gas and the permanent power by Dominion Virginia Power have both been completed. All three pool shells are complete. The large pool gutter is done. The warm-up pool and wellness pools have both received their coping and tile. Piping to the filter rooms has been completed and backfilled. At this point in time, the pool contractors moved off-site for a period while the general contractor started major work in the large pool space to install above-ceiling painting, HVAC ducts, lighting, bleacher pad, concrete, and the like. Parking lot paving is about 60% complete and continues as weather permits. The Embry Mill Park athletic fields are substantially complete, and the contractor continues to work on the punch list items. Belmont Frey Farm Trail, the construction of the Belmont Crossing project is substantially complete. Inspection by VDOT is to be scheduled. VDOT has authorized us to begin right-of-way acquisition for the Phase 4 trail. At this point, the title search is underway, and a letter's been drafted to the one property owner to ask for permission to come on-site to do the assessment and evaluation. We need to, we needed to update some information, some geotechnical information on our construction plans, so they got delayed in their submission to VDOT, but that should still occur this week for a construction plan review, so the plans are ready when the right-of-way stuff catches up. National Park Service is still working on the agreement across their property. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hoppy. Ms. Bomke?
Yeah, at, at some point, I'd like to talk to you a little bit more, although this is in Bob's district, but we're kind of working on it jointly. The new, I don't know if you want to call it a speed bump, slowdown over there on, is that Carter Street?
Washington.
Washington Street. Yeah, because as you know, one of the constituents has, has raised some issues, so maybe we can, and I went out there and was actually sitting at the road watching people. Some slow down, some don't. It's going to be interesting, so we can talk about that later.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple other quick items. One bit of trivia, Mr. Rapp mentioned that Centerport Parkway is almost done. That was the first county-built road, and you may not realize this, but it's Route 8900. We selected that number because the Prince William County Parkway is Route 3000, and the Fairfax County Parkway is Route 7100. So, we wanted to make sure that we were higher than our two locales to the north, so that's where Route 89, your trivia for the day. Late last year, Mr. Melday asked for a discussion item regarding a transportation district styled after what Hampton Roads has, and we'll be bringing that to the Infrastructure Committee at your first meeting, or February meeting, and then to the board after that. The Highway Department just released HB2 scoring. Mr. Rapp and his staff are in the throes of reviewing that. We'll also be bringing that to the Infrastructure Committee and to the board as we've had a chance to decipher those. Those were released just within the last few minutes. There is one addition to the agenda, that's item number 29 from Mrs. Bomke, which would approve the appointment of Mr. Greg Colangian as the Falmouth District Representative to the Telecommunications Commission. That concludes my report.
Thanks, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 29? Motion by Ms. Sellers?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bomke. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next, we have consent agenda. Are there any items that members wish to pull from consent?
Eighteen.
Mr. Melday is eighteen. Hearing no more?
Move approval minus eighteen.
We have a motion for consent, minus eighteen, from Mr. Melday, second by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Melday, number eighteen.
It's just, I think it's noteworthy and very nice that someone donated a lot in Crowsness Harbor to the county. So, I wanted to kind of take it off the, I just wanted to take it off the consent, so we could take a minute to be grateful that somebody did that. How do we thank a person that, in addition to whatever tax benefits they might get?
We could certainly sign a note on behalf of the board, if you'd like.
That would be nice. I think it's a big deal.
And no tax bill is a nice thank you.
I think a letter from the chairman or the board would be fine.
Okay, we'll do that. You have a motion?
Second.
Yes.
You seconded it. Okay, motion by Mr. Melday, second by Ms. Bomke. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Vote passes seven to zero. Next item, 22. Public Works grant permanent access to public right-of-way on Bonnie Lee Court, Griffiths Widewater District.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Towery with the Department of Public Works will make the presentation. Mr. Towery is on loan from the Department of Utilities. He's our Acting Assistant Director in the position previously occupied by Steve Hubble.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jason Towery, Acting Assistant Director of Public Works. I'll be speaking with you briefly this afternoon on the issue of Bonnie Lee Court. This matter was before the board in October of last year on the October 6 meeting. The public hearing was closed at that time and subsequently deferred. The topic was deferred to allow further discussion on, between the parties. The matter involves access to a public right-of-way to allow subdivision of tax map parcel 20-58. The parcel currently fronts on Ebenezer Church Road. The proposed subdivision requests access to the adjoining Bonnie Lee Court. Bonnie Lee Court was never accepted into the state system due to developer default, and the county does not hold sufficient security to complete the necessary work. The right-of-way was dedicated to the county making it necessary for the board to take action if permanent access is to be granted for this parcel. Property owners have since discussed the issue with Supervisor Cavalier and with the residents of Bonnie Lee Court. All parties have agreed that a mutually agreeable solution could involve the property owners contributing towards the maintenance of Bonnie Lee Court. Proposed Resolution R1628 grants the property permanent access to Bonnie Lee Court, subject to the execution of an agreement with the county where the owners are required to contribute towards road maintenance activities. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions? Curious. Mr. Melday?
It'll be an ongoing, like an HOA-type of arrangement? It would never end perpetuity? Or is it going to, is it a goal to bring it, bring it up to standards and turn it over to the state?
There, there is an existing HOA right now, but it's, doesn't collect any money from the seven original lots that were there, so they have no pool of resources. What this will allow us to do, this agreement, will allow us to use the $11,000 or so in securities that the original developer, who went out of business, sold this property originally, had put toward the road being accepted into the VDOT system. That, that money would be used along with a remaining amount from the applicant to resurface the, the road as it is right now, which it is a, a private roadway, but it does have public access. So, I mean, it's a cul-de-sac, so nobody drives down it. The school bus uses it, basically, probably the only other people beside the residents. And this, this would provide a resurfaced road. It's been there for quite some time and is in need of, of some repairs, but it would still, at this point, maintain its private road status, and we could, at a later juncture, if necessary, apply for, for VDOT to take it into their system. But this arrangement was agreed to by both the applicants and the property owners who I met with on more than one occasion, so we finally ironed out the specifics of this last night, and the specifics aren't written down. We're going to allow the, the staff to, to go ahead, but everyone is in, in full agreement.
Staff mentioned maintenance. You, I'm just curious, I can go along with this either way, but is this going to be a fix, put some money into the road, and then that's the end of this deal? Or is this, is there a maintenance component to this arrangement?
The applicant has, wants to initiate a road maintenance agreement. The applicant has, wants to initiate a road maintenance agreement, but has to have buy-in from the other residents on the street. There's seven original. This will add two houses to that, so it'll be a total of nine there, so that they could all then contribute to a road maintenance agreement, but that is not in place yet.
Understood, okay. Thank you.
I did have a question. You, you mentioned two houses, and we talked about that briefly. Did, did we actually impose that as a condition, or is that just kind of an agreement?
That, that is the agreement, that is the proffer amendment that, that would, two houses maximum. Is that not correct? That's my understanding.
My understanding is that at the October hearing, the applicant offered the, the two lots.
Yeah, and there's like nineteen acres to work with, so this is less than, I think they could've got six in there if they wanted to, but they're only proposing two at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Right. I knew they agreed to that, but I just didn't see the actual proffer language in the packet unless I missed it.
We, we will go back and take a look at that.
Okay. I just don't read it that way currently.
Mr. Chairman, it does, it does mention the maintenance requirement, as, as Mr. Cavalier pointed out, but I don't see the language with respect to the, to the two lots.
I mean, the applicant is here, I, we could ask him to stipulate that.
I wonder, and I think that would be good. I wonder, Mr. Chairman, if we could just delay this for a few minutes, why don't we clean up the resolution and we could still take care of it today, if, if, if the board would be agreeable, just to make sure we've got that language incorporated?
Sure. I think we should do that. Okay, any other questions, though, before we put this on the table? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, new business, number 23. Planning and zoning authorize the county administrator to amend a deed of gift to the Greater Fredericksburg Habitat for Community, Rock Hill District.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll, I'll start this, and Mr. Harvey is here for questions, as is Mr. Tom Carlson, who's the Executive Director of, of Habitat for Humanity, Greater Fredericksburg Habitat for Humanity. Back in 2011, the board authorized two lots to be conveyed in the Lake Arrowhead subdivision of the Rock Hill District to Habitat for Humanity. At the time, those lots were paired with two other lots for a total of four lots, and the restriction was put on the lots to allow only two homes on the four lots. Habitat for Humanity has sent in a request to ask for an additional home to be built or to have that restriction be lifted. I do want to correct something that's in the background report. The soil study that was done is quite dated. The Health Department requires a soil study to be done within 18 months of a permit being issued, and so Habitat will need to have soiled studies done to ensure that the property perks. If the perk study comes back that, that the property isn't sufficient for a septic system, then the county won't issue a building permit. So I just want to ensure and advise the board that this is, we're not in any way creating a pump-and-hall situation. This would be a viable septic system, assuming that the, the site perks and the Health Department approves it. The restriction would be lifted. Habitat for Humanity intends to consolidate the two lots and build a small two-bedroom house on one of those. We recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Ms. Meyer, this is in your district, so it's your pleasure.
A motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion for R. 1631. Please cast your vote. We have a second by Ms. Sellers. Tally the vote.
Wait. Sorry.
Okay, recast your votes, please. Tally the vote. Vote passes seven to zero.
Mr. Chairman, if you will indulge me for two seconds, I want to thank Mr. Carlson for the work that he does. This is, this is a great service to the community. It's a hand up, not a hand out, and I myself was, was a recipient of an Officer Next Door Home program, and I can fully attest that this does change people's lives, so thank you.
Okay, item number 24. Finance and Budget. FY 2016, mid-year review and release of the 5% appropriations hold. Ms. Collins, floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am Nancy Collins, Budget Division Director, and here to report on our finances at mid-year and also ask the board to release the 5% appropriation hold for both schools and county and to budget and appropriate some funds for our Parks Project. At mid-year, I'm pleased to report that revenues are on track. It looks like we're going to be slightly above budget. A slight caveat, part of it is one-time money that we won't be seeing again, but the things that we usually, that lately we've been talking about as being strong are true again this year. Personal property, sales tax, meals tax, development activity, ambulance fees continue to be strong. On the expenditure side, we had some challenges. The budget included some savings from the closing of Woodlands Pool for the winter and, in the current year, and that won't happen until next year, so there'll be some additional operating costs that we will absorb in the budget using the contingency. Children's Services Act expenditures, one thing that we talk about frequently have, as being over budget, I'm pleased to report that this year they are tracking closely with the budget. Health insurance is tracking slightly above budget. We asked the board to reserve the savings from 2014 as a hedge against additional costs in health insurance, and at this time, it appears like we're going to have to dip into that, but that, but that, the reserve is sufficient to cover our projected costs. And I will say that, that the county and the schools are under, right now, pursuing an RFP for joint health services, health insurance services, and that is underway right now. We also budgeted managed attrition of 1.1 million in the current year, and we will achieve that goal. Fire and rescue is experiencing some staffing challenges. They have larger-than-usual turnover, and because their hiring process is lengthy and robust and they have academy requirements, it takes a while to get firefighters up and going and ready on the street. So what they are doing now to meet the coverage needs is, their staff is working extra overtime, so we are expecting that their overtime budget will be, their overtime expenditures will be over budget, and we're, we're going to find savings in salaries and other operating lines to cover that. We're also reviewing options to solve the problem in the future. We're looking at the Public Safety Staffing Plan, the, the compensation study that was done last year, and overfills are currently being approved. We anticipate that we will include some of these options in FY 17 budget proposal, and if the board approves them, we think our mid-year projections indicate that if the board would wish to advance the solutions before July 1st, that, that opportunity will exist in, in the current year. The board in November amended the financial policies to enhance them and increased the reserve, the revenue stabilization reserve requirement from one-half percent of general fund revenues to 2% by 2018. We are projecting some positive results of operations this year that would go into that fund according to the fiscal policy's funding formula, and that is something that the rating agencies would look favorably on. So I mentioned Parks Bonds. In order to minimize our borrowing costs, we, we, it's our policy to borrow for two years, with, two years' worth of Parks or bond expenditures, and then ask the board to budget and appropriate the money as we need it. Last summer, we borrowed $2.7 million for the next phase of Emery Mill Park. Now we are asking the board today to appropriate bond proceeds in the amount of $115,000 to be used to construct a playground and also to amend the design so that we'll be ready for the next phase. And we would expect the actual construction to begin in the summer, and we would bring it back to the full board to appropriate the rest of the bond proceeds at that time. The school board has requested full release of their 5% appropriation hold, and we expect the school board to bring an item to the board in February to discuss the unspent FY 15 carryover monies, including funding for the school buses. So the action that we're asking for today is proposed Resolution R. 1621 budgets, it releases the 5% appropriation hold, and it appropriates the bond proceeds in the, in the amount of $115,000 for the next phase of Emery Mill Park, and proposed Resolution 1640 releases the school's 5% appropriation hold, and we recommend approval of those.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Mr. Snolz?
The carryover money from the schools, are you referring to the 8.3 million?
Yes, sir.
Do we know if, and this may be an unfair question for you, but do we know if they've hired an auditor?
The audit is underway, the forensic, forensic auditor, right. The financial audit is complete.
The forensic auditor is, auditor is underway. So they'll, they'll come back to us in February, you said, with a report.
With a requet, right. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, there are a couple of questions at the board's Finance Committee meeting with respect to the playground.
Okay, please.
One was, does it include swings? And I'm happy to report it does. And the second one was a question about the surface and if it's ADA compliant. It is an ADA compliant surface. It's a very finely grated wood mulch, so you can roll a wheelchair over, over top of it. We were asked about a more permanent surface. Some, some of the playgrounds in the county, particularly at our, at our schools, have a, have a hard rubber or a ground-up rubber surface, but it, but it makes for a very hard surface. We'd, we'd be happy to, to add that. That's about a $50,000 add to the price, so if the board would, would like to do that, we would need to add that number, or add to the 115, an additional 50,000. That's the delta between that and the, the wood mulch surface. I just wanted to bring that to you.
Okay, any questions on that particular item? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the county portion, which is R. 16-21.
I'd like to move for R. 16-21.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, do we have any discussion on this item?
Yeah, so I was the one that brought up the, the item regarding the ADHA. So, so, Mr. Romanello, so from your conversation right now and our conversation just a little bit ago, you found out that the delta's 50,000.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Turns out, Mr. Southall had received a quote, and it is a $50,000 difference for the permanent surface versus the, the wood mulch.
Wow. Well, and I think one of the other things that the board might want to consider, the other thing that Mr. Romanello brought up is the ongoing maintenance of having that surface is much easier for the Parks and Rec Commission, I mean, Parks and Rec Department to maintain that, because basically, all you have to do is hose it off. You don't have to replace the mulch every year. You don't have to, and basically, they'd have to go out there and pick up the trash, and that's about it. But, I mean, it is $50,000, and that's something we'd have to consider.
So are you proposing an amendment to the motion or, or not?
I'm on the fence.
We could revisit this in the future if, after discussion, you know, or contemplating, we come back and, and decide that that is something we wanted to do.
You can, and the, the surface, we can, our hope was to open the playground with the St. Patrick's Day tournament, so, but we can change the surface of the playground at any, at a later date if that's the pleasure of the board.
Okay, Mr. Snolz?
The other playgrounds in the county, what type of service do they have?
Oh, I'm told both.
I wouldn't want to get in a situation where we're, somebody's hauling parrot there, you know, I've got to have it here because I've got it over there, so, thank you.
Okay, so we have the original motion, which is R. 1621, on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we entertain a motion on the school portion, which is R. 16-40. Moved by Mr. Cavalier. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your vote. Sorry, enter discussion on that. Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next item is 25. County Administration endorse a Stafford County Multicultural Coalition. I think we have Mr. Doug Taylor here to address the board. This is something that's been in the works for quite a while, and it's the first time it's making it to the board level, so what we will probably do is, after the presentation, to give us an idea of, of what we're looking at, let the community hear about it for the first time. We'll probably send it to our Community and Economic Development Committee to, to work with you to kind of figure out what it is we're looking at, budgets and things like that, so just want to let you know that.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Doug Taylor, and I represent the newly-formed Stafford Multicultural Coalition. I would just like to take a few seconds to introduce the members of the coalition, and first of all, we have our newly-minted sheriff.
Sheriff.
David Decatur. Secondly, we have Mrs. Valerie Conghim from, she's the Public Information Officer from Stafford, Stafford Public Schools. Reverend Felicia Allen from Agape Fellowship Ministries. Pastor Michael, Michael Eluwabumi.
Pastor Michael.
Pastor Michael, from Amazing Grace Sanctuary. Mrs. Catherine Shalaby from Developmental Consulting Services. And last but not least, M.C. Moncur, the Stafford County Tourism Manager. She has really gone above and beyond, I'll, I'll use my military term, above, above and beyond the call of duty to help get this thing off the ground. In this past Sunday's opinion section of the, of the Freelance Star, there's an op-ed concerning the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. Dr. King once said that a riot is the language of the unheard. In my opinion, I think that possibly explains some of the recent civil unrest that we've seen in this country, like in Baltimore and, and Ferguson, Missouri. Sometimes, all folks want is to be heard, an opportunity to be heard. And they also want people to attempt to understand where they're coming from, to see their perspective And the reason we formed this coalition is to proactively give all citizens of Stafford County an opportunity to voice their needs and concerns. Our process, we're going to use community, community-building models and methods to get this done. And basically, we want to promote Stafford County as increasingly welcoming. There's a little book that says Stafford is home to all. To be increasingly welcoming, representative, and responsive to the needs of the citizens. So on behalf of the coalition, I'd like to express our gratitude for your consideration of the resolution endorsing Stafford Multicultural Coalition.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, very good job.
Sure.
Okay, so as I stated earlier, I would like the Community and Economic Development Committee to take this up at their earliest convenience.
Close session.
Close session.
Whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for, one, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the board, and, two, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding a specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Board will now convene in closed session. Do we have a motion to certify a closed meeting? We have a motion by Ms. Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Baumke. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. We're going to circle back to item 22, which was the permanent access to the public right-of-way on Bonnie Lee Court. We have an updated resolution. Mr. County Administrator, could you give us a synopsis on that?
Mr. Towery, do you want to handle this? We've added the, we've added language with respect to the two lots. Is that correct? It should, at your place, ladies and gentlemen, R. 16-28R.
Correct. Yes, we've added additional language at the end. Thank you. Just to clarify that there would be no more than two lots accessible off of Bonnie Lee Court.
Okay. Draw your attention to the second to last paragraph. That's where you'll find that. See, this is in Mr. Cavalier's district. See, this is in Mr. Cavalier's district, what's your pleasure?
I'd like, R16-28R.
A motion by Mr. Cavalier, seconded by Mr. Milde, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. And if we could hit number 29 real quick, County Administration, approve appointment of Mr. Greg Colangian as the Falmouth Representative to the Telecommunications Commission. You should have a board bank application in your add-on. Ms. Baumke, do you like a motion?
I move for approval.
Seconded by Ms. Sellers, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Board will recess till the seven o'clock session. Session of the January 19th meeting of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors. At this time, Mrs. Baumke will lead us in invocation, followed by Mrs. Maurer leading us into pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Lord, we give thanks for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. As we gather in these chambers tonight with our new Board, please prepare our hearts and minds to consider the business before us. Give us insight to lead with integrity and wisdom, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good for those that have put their trust in our leadership. Lord, we do not understand the acts of ISIS, but please protect us from future acts of terrorism. Lord, we ask for your continued support and prayer for our men and women in uniform, and we thank all of them for their service to each of us every day, especially our own fire and rescue and sheriff departments. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Maurer for a proclamation.
Will Mr. Gibbons please join me in his lovely white flowers? Yes. Tonight, we're going to honor someone who is well-known by most of the people in this room and whose actions over the years have shown how much he loves this county, Robert Gibbons. I am honored and proud to present you with this proclamation. Mr. Gibbons is one of those people who has truly left his mark on Stafford County. He has served on the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Utilities Commission. He has also served on multiple regional commissions and groups representing Stafford's interests. His efforts have aided transportation, planning, zoning, tourism, and many other county initiatives, and he has volunteered his time for over 34 years. He truly has the heart of a public servant, and I have huge shoes to fill in this position because he is well-known for his constituent services. That is one thing I was told going door-to-door, is you are the man to go to when there is a problem. And Ms. Gibbons, I want to honor you because he couldn't have done 34 years of service without the loving support that you provided him, so I'm glad you're up here joining him. And I would like to say that whereas Mr. Robert Gibbons served the citizens of Stafford County in various capacities for more than 34 years, and whereas Mr. Gibbons served on the Board of Supervisors from January 1992 through December 2007, and was Chairman of the Board in 1994, 1995, 2002, and 2006, and Vice Chairman in 2000, 2001, and 2003; and whereas Mr. Gibbons was appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals from January 2008 through December 2012, and served on the Utilities Commission from January 2010 through February 2012; and whereas Mr. Gibbons served on the Planning Commission from January 1982 through January 1991, and again from March 2012 through December 2015, and served as the Chairman of the Commission in 1986, 1987, and 1990, and Vice Chairman for three terms; and whereas some of the many accomplishments of the Commission during Mr. Gibbons' tenure included the adoption of the Transfer of Development Rights Program, expansion of the Transportation Impact Fee Program, and the implementation of the Cluster Ordinance standards for rural subdivisions; and whereas Mr. Gibbons was one of the first planning commissioners to complete the Virginia Tech Certified Planning Commissioner course; and whereas Mr. Gibbons also served on multiple boards, committees, as well as serving on the George Washington Regional Committee, the Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Potomac and Rappahannock Transportation Committee, Quantico Growth Management Committee, VRE, and other regional and state committees. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 19th day of January 2016, that it be and hereby does recognize and commend Mr. Robert C. Gibbons for his years of service and dedication to the citizens of Stafford County.
Next, we'll recognize Mrs. Baumke for a presentation of a proclamation.
Good evening. We are honoring Mr. Hirons for his years of service on the Planning Commission, but also for his continued willingness to serve on the Stafford County School Board. Mr. Hirons served on many subcommittees while on the Planning Commission, contributing to many successful efforts. During his tenure, the Commission enacted a farmer's market ordinance, a microbrewery ordinance, and a successful rewrite of the Stafford's Comprehensive Plan. And we know that that is no easy undertaking, actually all three of those. Mr. Hirons has a young family, and we are grateful for the time he sacrifices with them to help serve Stafford County. And I might want to just add that Scott is at that fun point in his life with he and his wife Heather, have three boys, and they're each, one at elementary, one at middle, and one in high school. And with that, I will read his proclamation. Whereas Mr. C. Scott Hirons represented the Falmouth District as a member of the Planning Commission from January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2013, and was elected Vice Chairman in 2012 and 2013; and whereas Mr. Hirons served on multiple committees while on the Planning Commission, including the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Architectural Review Board from 2012 to 2013, and any technical review committee meetings that dealt with issues in the Falmouth District. And whereas during his time on the Planning Commission, Mr. Hirons worked to make sure Stafford High School students had maximum practice time on the football field by working with Leland Station developers to proffer money for an artificial turf field at the new Stafford High School. And whereas during Mr. Hirons' service, the Planning Commission passed a farmer's market ordinance and a microbrewery ordinance; and whereas Mr. Hirons assisted with Stafford's Comprehensive Plan rewrite and adoption; and whereas Mr. Hirons was staunch supporter of the school vision, ensuring schools received the proffers negotiated for them. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 19th day of January 2016, that it be and hereby does recognize Mr. C. Scott Hirons for his years of service on the Planning Commission and his dedication to the citizens of Stafford County. Thank you, Scott, for all your work.
Next, we'll have presentations by the public. This is an opportunity for the Board to hear from the public. We ask that when you come to the podium, you state your name and address, and when you begin speaking, the green light will come on. When you see the yellow light, you have one minute remaining, and when the red light comes on, your time is expired. I do have one speaker card. We have Ms. Jennifer Wieners.
I apologize for my informal dress, I was working all day. My name's Jennifer Wieners, I work at 450 Garrisonville Road, I'm a clinical manager at Advanced Spine and Pain. We're located on the first floor of that building. We love our new space, we've been there obviously about two years, we're super happy with it. So I'm here, Mr. Whitford is here as well, he has a much lengthier thing than I do.
Ma'am, I hate to interrupt you, I had, this was general comment, is this in reference to a public hearing later tonight?
I wrote it on there what it's about. At 458.
I'll call you back up when that public hearing comes. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, is there anybody on my right that wishes to speak to general topics? Anybody on my left? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the presentations by the public. Next up on the agenda is item 26, Planning and Zoning, authorize a proffer amendment on 41.72 acres, zoned R3, urban residential, high-density Colonial Forge in the Hartwood District.
Good evening, if I could have the floor computer, please. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mike Zaraf with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you is a proffer amendment for Colonial Forge. The specific request is to amend proffered conditions to remove the phasing requirements that are in place for commercial development and park requirements. The site, it's zoned R3, urban residential, high-density, covers 41 acres. The agent, Charlie Payne, is here tonight representing Stafford Associates Limited. The location of the site, this map before you represents the zoning map. The site itself, the Colonial Forge development, is highlighted in the orange shade, that represents the R3 zoning. The areas subject to this specific request are highlighted in blue and cross-hatched on the map. That represents sections 2C, 4, and 8. That makes up 96 lots, the kind of final 96 lots in the subdivision. Site's located along Woodcutters Road, that's the new road that bisects the project and is to the south of Courthouse Road and north of Kellogg Mill Road. The site, the land around the site is zoned A1, there's many large lot residential uses and other undeveloped land around the site. For just a brief zoning history on this project, in the 1990s, the property known as Augustine was reclassified from A1 and A2 zoning to several residential zones, including B2 and M1 zone properties with proffers. There were two subsequent amendments to the original proffers, most recent occurring in 2004. The subject property is a portion of the larger project. The total Augustine project makes up all these red, green, and blue shaded areas. The subject area, well, Augustine first was divided into three areas, Augustine North, Augustine Central, the subject area known as Colonial Forge, and then that area, as I mentioned, is zoned R3 with a mix of dwelling unit types. And then Augustine South, which is all zoned commercial and industrial. Augustine North is built out, Augustine, the Colonial Forge is still under development, and Augustine South is undeveloped and has since been sold to different owners. The proffers currently allow no more than 927 dwelling units in this overall site, basically within Augustine North and Central. The aerial view of the property, you can see that the area is developing. As I mentioned, it's residential development, this is Colonial Forge, it's on 210 acres, there's 573 approved dwelling units in this area. It's a variety of dwelling unit types. Construction has been progressing from the north to the south. Now, construction's occurring on the south side of Acakeek Creek, near Kellogg Mill Road, along Woodcutters Road. Woodcutters Road now has been constructed completely through the site from the north end of the project to the south. Land has been graded, infrastructure installed, and lots plotted for much of the remaining development in this area. This slide shows just a breakdown of the approved planned and built dwelling units in all of Augustine. From the summary and what you see in the end result total section, it shows that 236 more dwelling units remain to be occupied in this development. And from this, and that's from what's been approved on construction plans, and then also there is a potential for an additional 37 dwelling units to go from 890 units up to 927. But currently, the plans are for the project to max out at 890 dwelling units total. Now looking at the specific amendments that are being proposed, the applicant is proposing to reduce the maximum number of dwelling units from 927 down to 900 units. Originally, they had proposed a reduction from, down to 915. The latest change to the proffers that you should have received today actually brings that down from 915 down to 900 units. There are several proffers that would be, are proposed to be deleted. Includes a three-acre site for a 5,000-square-foot daycare center that would be required to be reserved for sale or development. Also, requirement to grade and temporarily cede four ball fields on 12 acres before the 800th residential occupancy permit. And then submitting a, requirement to submit a site plan for 50,000 square feet of non-residential building area prior to the 801st residential occupancy. And then completing that 50,000, those 50,000 square feet of non-residential building area prior to getting an additional 100 residential occupancy permits. So what that means is, they basically have to construct 50,000 square feet of non-residential building area to be able to build anywhere, the units from the 801st to the 900th dwelling unit in the project. And also with more deletions, then also continuation of the commercial phasing would be to delete a requirement to complete an additional 100,000 square feet of non-residential building area prior to an additional 91 residential occupancy permits. So that would apply to any of the residential units above 901. Right now, there would be no effect. There's currently, as mentioned, a plan for 890 total units, and 900 dwelling units would be the proposed proffer cap. So they could add 10 additional units at someplace on the project, but there are no immediate plans for that to happen. Also, a new proffer's proposed that would be an obligation for the applicant to construct and backfill a retaining wall in Embry Mill Park with the estimated cost of work and materials at $974,082. This would accommodate two full-size soccer fields and associated infrastructure with that. As it relates to the overall master plan of Embry Mill, these improvements are identified in Phase 3 of the park development. And as it relates to the capital improvements plan, this identifies Phase 3, this portion of the park to build out with an opening date of 2019 at a cost of $5.6 million. So then, with the phasing, also I want to note that the proffer also requires a completion of this work by June 30 of this year, subject to the county's willingness and readiness to proceed with this phase of the Embry Mill Park project. Looking at the valuation of these changes, the dwelling unit reduction brings a cap, dwelling unit cap at 900 units closer to the planned lot yield of 890. Regarding the commercial phasing deletions, staff would note that Augustine South, the area is under separate ownership now. area is under separate ownership now. Colonial Forge does not control the commercially-zoned land at this point. Second point, the area of Augustine South is in an undeveloped area that will require significant infrastructure improvements to add these, this additional commercial square footage, and the area is isolated from population centers currently. Third point, Augustine South is currently under consideration for separate rezoning actions. This is the portion of what's known as the George Washington Village rezoning request. That application is on hold currently and may be amended in the future. Regarding the changes or the additional park proffers, the change would potentially increase deficits of recreation fields. The county's currently in deficit for fields, and the county also has limited funding for future fields. Proffer would, also, it does, would remain, the part requirement to build the four fields would remain in Augustine South because the proffers are not changing there. So the obligation to build those fields would be under the shift to the owner of Augustine South. But the phasing, timing of that would no longer be known. It also would indefinitely delay a park intended to serve the residents of Augustine North and Colonial Forge. And then current proffer limits what would be delivered with this current proffer. The proffer requires a construction of four ball fields to be graded and temporarily seeded. Staff notes there's little certainty as to what additional amenities may be included with the fields, such as restrooms and playgrounds and some of the basic conditions of the playing surface is unknown, too. And also, the size of the fields or infrastructure are not stated in the current proffers. So as noted, the assistance with construction of Phase 3 of the Embry Mill Park is proposed as a mitigation method to the changes proposed. The illustration shows the area of the Embry Mill Park, the applicant's proposing to improve. It includes a construction of retaining wall. The, if you can see, the blue line on the image illustrates the location of that retaining wall that would be constructed. And then behind that, to the right of that, backfill would be imported from the Colonial Forge site over to this, to fill in behind that back, that retaining wall. Then also provide erosion and sediment control protections and storm drainage improvements. This would help address development challenges for both projects. The county is in the process of developing the park and is encountering a deficit in fill material to be able to complete the park. And also, the applicant of Colonial Forge has excess fill material that could be used at the park. Staff does note that the county monetary proffer guidelines are close to estimated value of the work at Embry Mill. Staff has estimated the equivalent monetary contributions for park facilities would amount to $906,000 with the, applying that to the additional units that would be, that the applicant will be able to build with this change.
One last question.
Yeah, the equivalent number of amounts of monetary, if you apply the monetary guidelines for proffers as it relates to parks, that would amount to $906,000. Yeah, yeah, not the total, yeah. And also, this would assist the county with accelerating the completion of the park. This phase of the park project has a total estimated cost of $2.5 million, discounting the applicant's proposed contribution of $974,000, the remaining cost to the county to complete the field portion of the park, which would add, completing top dressing the field and adding all the site infrastructure, parking lots, and lighting and everything would run $1.6 million for additional funds the county would have to pay to build the remaining portion of the park. This image staff provided to the Planning Commission during their deliberation. So I wanted to show you this. This map provided showed the distance comparison between the two park sites to the center point of Colonial Forge. And this shows that the proffered Augustine Park site is slightly farther away than the current Embry Mill Park site. And also note that the distance between, from Embry Mill Park to Augustine Park is 1.6 miles as well. In summary, staff is supportive of this proffer amendment and recommends approval pursuant to the ordinance, so 1603. Staff believes it appropriately mitigates the park impacts. And although this does remove commercial phasing, the isolated location of the commercial area and the fact that the applicant no longer controls that area would limit the ability for the site to develop in the near term. And staff would also have concerns with the undeveloped portions of Colonial Forge. If this was not approved, that, those areas would remain kind of in an unfinished condition until sometime in the future. And we'll take any questions at this time.
Ms. Oles.
You say the undeveloped portions. What do you mean? What condition are they in? They're graded or they're?
They're graded-out areas. There's some areas where you have like a completed street and then the lots are, would be there, graded out. You might have some utilities, you know, kind of sticking up out of the ground and, you know, be safe, but the overall appearance would, of a street with, you know, lots that would have to be maintained by the HOA or by the developer would maybe not be as sightly.
Okay. And what is, what number are they at now? What dwelling unit are they on?
They are, they've completed and occupied 654 units, so they would have 236 more dwelling units remain to build out and occupy before they fully complete the whole project.
And so they've, they've already put in infrastructure for 254?
Well, for most of them, there's probably another section that, I don't know if they have all the infrastructure in, but there's, most of the areas are all graded out. They may have some additional infrastructure to complete. The applicant maybe can talk to that.
Okay.
Mr. Milde.
And I apologize for not understanding this completely. The, so, on one of my background pages, it looks to me, okay, for the total site, all three parcels, green, red, and blue, there's a, that's the total right now is 900 allowed units?
927.
927. And that, and after 800, you had to, that's, at 799, you, all these proffers kick in that they're trying to get rid of.
Right.
Okay. So, and let's, can we go back to the picture of the colored, the colored sections?
Computer, please.
Computer, please, sorry. I can see it perfectly.
Oh, you can see it?
Computer, please.
Wake up back there. So, am I wrong that we've already approved more than the 800 in the red and the green?
No, they, we've not reached the 800 yet. We've, well-
I didn't say built, I said approved.
No, approved through the zoning, the zoning has allowed up to 927.
Let me just put it this way. If you didn't, if you didn't, if Augustine South didn't get developed, could they, could they fit, under their current plans, at least 800 units on red and green?
Yes, and it's actually planned out for 890. But they're, they've not reached that point yet.
So it's, so, just, it's a silly question, but it seems like the blue section state will become un, it will be the cost of, the cost and the other reasons they're not even in control of some of the proffers now, they really won't be able to develop the blue section unless these proffers are changed. Is that wrong?
No, they could develop, this blue area could develop commercially at any time.
I mean residentially. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all zoned commercially, so they, yeah, they could not, yeah, the issue's not developing any residential down here. It's, this is all, the blue area is where any of the commercial would happen.
Okay, so there's no threat of residential development in the blue?
No.
So, I guess I'd apologize for not understanding. So we're just trying to, okay, we, if we, we'll get 800 units, no matter what, and we'll get 90 more if we get rid of, change all these, change all these proffers, but they'll all be up in the green and the red?
Correct. And the remaining, the remaining units would be in the green. The red is built out.
Right, right, I read that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a question. When did they no longer control Augustine South? So when this was originally approved, a single landowner was in control of all three parcels, correct?
Correct.
And so when did they divest themselves of Augustine South?
That was back, I believe, in the 2000s, and I'd have to defer to the applicant to, on that exact date.
So they began grading for beyond the 800 lots. They could, they could build 800 homes without any of the proffers being triggered, correct?
Correct.
But they continued to grade for all 890, even though they knew they couldn't fulfill the proffers?
As far as I'm understanding, yes. At least they're, not the total amount, but, but an amount that goes over, over 800.
So one of the staff's concerns is that there's this hazardous condition that could be, that could remain should we don't approve this, that the hazardous condition was created knowing that they couldn't do it unless the board changed the proffers?
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Bunkie?
Okay, my question is, if you go back and you watch the Planning Commission meeting from September of 2013, the applicant's lawyer at that point in time stated that they were going to be back to the Planning Commission within the next month, but they didn't come back to the Planning Commission until September of 2015. As Ms. Mauer just indicated, if they knew they were going to be here, what happened or what didn't happen over those last two years when no action was taken if they knew they were going to be in this position?
To best of my knowledge, that, well, I know at the time when this initially came in, there were not any specific mitigation measures for the park, for removing the requirements to construct the park. And then since, after the point where things were put on hold in 2013, things, you know, basically, no action, you know, there, nothing, nothing new came to the county. And after some time went by, then the application was adjusted to add in the provision to assist with the construction of Embry Mill Park. So that was the change, that occurred from 2013 to 2015.
Okay, and then I guess my other question is, if the, if we weren't over budget on Embry Mill, would staff be supporting this proffer amendment? Or is that?
I don't, yeah.
Is that, I think, our staff?
Like, Ms. Chairman, I'll help with that. Yeah, we're, we're not over budget on Embry Mill. There have been some board-level decisions that have been made that have, that have increased the budget, but we are within budget for the current phase, which is the construction of the building and the six fields and the amenities that are there now. This would, if the board approved this, this would enable us to move forward potentially with the additional five fields within our capital improvement program figure. So this doesn't preclude the county from moving forward with Embry Mill if the board doesn't approve it, but it certainly facilitates that. It would just be, projects would, we would, if we move forward with the next phase or all five of the additional fields at Embry Mill, then we would have to move money from another project. So it just, if the board chooses to approve this, that gives us an alternative with respect to our capital improvement plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Snellis.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You said the size of the fields are not proffered.
Right.
I mean, just a field.
Right.
There's no-
It says four ball fields.
Four ball fields. It could be size that is room, I guess, if they want to do that. The second part of that is, who would maintain them? Well, we can come back to that one.
Sorry about that.
If you could bring up that map that showed the distance between Embry Mill and these proposed ball fields, again, I appreciate it, Mike. Yeah, my question is, let's say for the sake of discussion that the new owner of Augustine South, out of the goodness of his heart, decides to go ahead and put these ball fields in. Maybe they'll work a deal with him, I don't know. How would the residents access them?
That would also require some additional road infrastructure to even get access to, to the park site.
Okay. And when you get to answer that other-
Yeah, and the first question, the proffer is not specific as to who would maintain the field. It doesn't say that, you know, it doesn't reference the field being dedicated to the county, you know, or anything like that. So I guess they could potentially be maintained by the developer unless the county wants to take them on for maintenance.
So there's no provisions for size? There's no provisions for maintenance? It's just-
Correct.
12 ball fields of any size and we don't know who's going to maintain?
Four ball, four ball fields.
Four ball fields, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Milde?
Just, just make this simple. How much, what's the total monetary value of the improvements that they're offering?
974,000.
There's nothing else that we, that adds to that?
No.
And there was 115 units they're adding?
Well, in, in fact-
915 versus 800?
Meaning it's not, it would be the remaining, as planned now, 90 units or potentially up to 100 units.
It says here 100, they're limiting themselves to 915.
And that, now, you maybe received a latest change where they've reduced that down to 900.
Oh, okay. I am, I must have that. It's, it's, I pulled this off the website. Yeah, just now. Our website. Okay, never mind.
Ms. Chairman, the 900 is in the add-on folder. That, that was a late-breaking change.
It's just still in the, okay. So 100 units for a million bucks.
Right.
That comes down to.
Correct.
$10,000 a unit. Right? That's the math on that?
Yes.
Thanks.
Of the 974,000, how much of that is actual just dirt that's coming from the Colonial Forge site?
The value of the dirt is $108,000.
No, I saw a number that said 474,000.
Okay.
Huh? Yeah, it was more than half, I thought.
Oh, the, okay, 432,000, sorry, the 108,000 is the cost of importing the dirt, so.
Okay, so this dirt that needs to be, I'm assuming the dirt needs to be removed from the Colonial Forge site anyway. And there, so they would need to remove the dirt anyway in order to continue their, their plan, but yet, out of the goodness of their heart, they're giving it to us, but yet reducing, valuing it at 400,000?
I would want to, well, defer to the applicant as to whether they actually need to remove the dirt or if they could stabilize it in place.
Okay. And then my next question is, what is the value of the lost commercial? Now, it appears, because they've gone down to only 900 units, that they would only be required to do 50,000 square feet of commercial, not the entire 150,000. What would be the value of that commercial?
I would have to get back with you on what the, I guess, tax revenue benefit would be. I don't have that.
Okay, Mike, so, so we're not only losing the value of the parks, but there's also this commercial component that, you know, would bring in jobs and, and when they approve the project as a whole, as we see in a lot of these major rezonings, you know, there's this offset. So they approved 927 lots and said, we're going to offset it by this 150,000 square feet of commercial for the whole project. Augustine, you know, Augustine that's been in place for a long time, Colonial Forge, and for some reason, we allowed them to get up to 800 units before they started this offset process. And so I would like to know the value and whether or not the four, the value of the four ball fields, and it's on 12 acres, and there was a previous proffer change where they were originally supposed to deed over that 12 acres, and then when they did a proffer amendment long ago, it switched to four ball fields on the 12 acres. So the value of that 12 acres and a- So, the value of that 12 acres in addition to the value of the commercial that we're losing with the recurring, you know, we can do a present value analysis on that, and, and is that commensurate with the million bucks that we're getting?
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Snellings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's go back to the proffers that Mr. Milley mentioned. You, you said that this would work out to like $10,000 per unit, which exceeds our current proffer guidelines for parks and rec. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do you know what the original profit, monetary proffers are on that project? I wouldn't think it was $10,000 a unit.
It was not a per-unit, you know, the breakdown was different. It was, you know, the dedication of the, of the Colonial Forge High School site. It, it wasn't a, a specific per-unit value.
And there were no cash proffers?
Uh, it was, there was, I think, a million-dollar payment for a water tower. So, there were some, lump sum payments, but not a.
Okay.
Per-unit.
Thank you.
Easy number.
Mr. Milley?
But what is the current proffer for all components, transportation, education, parks and rec? What is that total proffer right now on a single-family home in Stafford?
$50,000.
And what is it on an apartment? 23?
27.
How much is it on a townhouse? It's also 27?
Or maybe around 40,000.
Thanks.
And transportation impact fees, they are, right?
That, um.
Because they were approved.
They were already approved, I believe. I don't think they, they would need to.
So, even though we're changing the proffers for them, we don't get to collect that?
I'd have to check on the transportation impact fees. I don't think they are, but I'd have to check.
Okay, any additional questions for staff?
Yes, just, you asked, you answered the question on what the total proffer was now, but what is the park component of the total proffer now?
Currently, it is $7,880 per unit.
So, this exceeds that number?
That's the current guy, yes, yes, it does.
Okay, no additional questions? Okay, let's see. Would the applicant like to address the board?
Mr. Chairman and other members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Charlie Payne, Law Firm Herschel Fleischer. We represent the applicant. Thank you for your time this evening. Happy New Year to you all. It's always good to be in Stafford County. I want to thank staff for its due diligence and its presentation. Your predecessors, Mr. Thomas, have always said the key to a presentation is brevity, so I will continue that during your tenure as chairman. I just want to reemphasize a couple of key themes to this application to answer a couple of good questions that Supervisor Mauer has raised, and then to answer any questions you may have after my presentation. And again, I appreciate your consideration of what we have to present tonight. Just sort of some key themes here in regards to the application. One, you've heard this several times, Augustine North, Central, and South, at all times, including the original rezoning, have been under different ownership and control. So, the question pertaining to whether or not Augustine South, or my client, divested itself, it never owned any interest in Augustine South. The current owner has owned Augustine South since 1999, just so that you understand that. So, rezoning, mid-'90s, and then a few years after that, Augustine South was acquired by its current owner. As many of you all know, it's part of the George Washington Village Project owned by Augustine South Associates, which is within your UDA. I think the, the other key component here that we need to understand, I've heard some questions regarding whether or not these proffers disappear. They don't go away. What we're asking for is relief from the triggers because we have no control over the use and the development at Augustine South. That's, that's sort of the key here. So, those proffers don't go away. They continue to run with Augustine South. So, the commercial continues to run, the ball field dedication, but the four ball fields to be provided, and they're only to be seeded and graded. That's it. So, they're not going to be completed, maintained, and no infrastructure. So, you read that proffer, it's very clear about it. Now, when George Washington Village folks come back to the table, the county's going to have another opportunity to massage and improve that proffer if we have questions and concerns about whether or not it's an appropriate proffer. Same with the commercial. The commercial will continue to run with Augustine South property. So, I just want to make sure we're all clear about that. The additional, the other third theme of this, which is key, is this an additional million dollars, approximately million dollars in in-kind contributions for park and recreation? Again, not taking away, this is adding to. Some really good questions as to what that value is. The, there was a question by Supervisor Mauer as to the value of the dirt. I think if you ask staff, our estimates came from them. They had already done an analysis as to what the cost would be from their engineer for the Embry Mill improvement that is necessary for the retaining wall. So, those numbers come directly from your own in-house analysis, not something that we created. Having the dirt, and you all know Stafford County has its own challenges with soils, having good infield dirt this close to that location is a very positive thing, and we can use it. We can sell it and we can use it. So, it's not as if we're just discarding it across the street. So, just want to make very clear about that. Some other key components here that I think we should talk about a little bit is obviously the current proffers that run with the project, both in North and Central, have been mostly satisfied, except for the proffers here that we're asking for relief from. The Augustine Golf Course has been provided, the Colonial Forge School Site, utilities brought to the site, clear, graded, dedicated to the county. Proffers regarding the dedication of the historic Furnace, Augustine Furnace Site was provided. There's been a significant amount of transportation proffers provided, a million dollars cash and utilities. So, these guys aren't getting a free pass here. What we're addressing is market changes. As many of you may or may not know, at the time that this was rezoned, there was supposed to be a Western Outer Connector connecting in that area. That would have made commercial viable. I think it's fair to say that commercial is not viable there at this point in time. I'm not sure it's going to be viable in the near future. I think it's more viable towards the interchange. So, I just want us to understand that this was not something that these folks sort of looked forward and said, "Boy, we're going to change our proffers at the end of the road." I think we'd love to have commercial in that area. In fact, if there was a commercial user, I'm sure the owner of Augustine South Associates would be ready to sell tomorrow. In summary, I think it's important, just as a reminder, the commercial and recreation proffers that are currently on the books will remain and encumber Augustine South. The applicant, again, will contribute approximately a million dollars in in-kind parks and recreation proffers that will help facilitate the Embry Mill Park and completion of that, which is a benefit not only to the immediate neighborhood, but also to the entire county, as we all know how important park and recreation facilities are to our county. It will also provide an opportunity for the county not to have to look for resources in other areas to provide for this gap. There are no additional impacts to schools, roads. Again, we have reduced the cap from, at one time, 991 to 927 to now 900. This project is, and this application is consistent with a comprehensive plan. I think staff has made it clear that the parks and recreation proffers we're providing would mitigate any impacts, and the applicant has fulfilled a substantial majority of its proffers that are currently imposed upon it today. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Milley?
I'm, I'm trying to understand what a proffer without a trigger is, how it'd be, how it's still a proffer?
It, well, the, the, the commercial requirement, the amount of commercial requirement, it still runs with Augustine South. It still runs with the land.
If there's no trigger, that means it doesn't, never has to be done.
Not necessarily. It, it will, that, that site, if it was to develop tomorrow, would have to develop 150,000 square feet of commercial at some point in time.
Right, that's all that can be done within it anyway.
Right, so we're not losing any commercial.
No, but you know, we've, this is an old silver trick. They used to do it all the time. They, before we started phasing in commercial, we got the residential, and we still have commercial pad sites all over the county that aren't being, aren't developed or are underdeveloped. It's, it's just, I see it a little differently, and I mean that respectfully. And also, I, I want you to know, being on the R-Board, you're not going to sell that dirt. We're, we are, people are paying to dump dirt, good dirt, at the landfill, and we're getting too much of it. So, it's not so easy. If you're lucky, you can haul it away. The cost of the trucking is all you'll get free to get rid of dirt.
Well, as you know, Mr. Milley, we have other developments that are owned and operated by Augustine Homes, and the dirt could be very well used.
I don't mean to be argumentative, but just, these are two things. It's something I unfortunately know something about, being on the dump board. That's it, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Sellers?
This is not going to complete the Embry Mill project. This is going into the next phase of the Embry Mill project. The Embry Mill project is not incomplete now, and I think that's been a source of confusion even amongst us, which, which even watching the Planning Commission, and I don't see Kathy here to talk about parks and rec, but this is a priority of the board. This is a priority of the area. So, I see where you guys are going with that. I do have some, some concern with losing the commercial, but something to think about in the area.
The, very good points. Again, we're just, we're assisting. We're not completing anything by, by, by any stretch of the imagination with just the contribution we're making. The commercial, again, and I understand the desire for the commercial focus. This particular area is not attractive for commercial investment at this point in time, and when in the, in the future, I don't know. So, what we're not losing is the commercial opportunity. It's the opportunity, I think, to concentrate additional rooftops in an area to attract a commercial, which isn't ever going to happen. And again, it still runs with, it will continue with the subject property. It does not dissipate or go away with this, with this request.
Mrs. Mauer?
So, you mentioned that the owners never had control of Augustine South, or Augustine South, but the, the proffers, when they bought this piece of property and made a business case to buy this piece of property, the proffers were in place. They knew they were limited to 800 units.
You're talking about, yes, Augustine North and Central?
Central.
Right.
Colonial Forge.
Yeah.
So, they knew that they were limited to these 800 units, since they didn't have any sort of ownership control over Augustine South?
Well, they've owned it for some time, and the anticipation of whether, when or when whether commercial will come was obviously still there, hoping that it would eventually evolve that way, but it just hasn't happened in that particular area. Again, planned infrastructure, the Outer Connector being in that particular area was to be attractive to commercial along with the development that's occurring in North, South, and Central, I'm sorry, North and Central, as well as along 630. That didn't happen. So, again, comprehensively, looking at Augustine South and where they are today, part of 1,200 acres, the commercial's going to happen eventually. I think it's going to be moving further east from that location.
And then. Oh, one last question, I'm sorry. Have they graded beyond the 800 lots?
Well, I think.
Has that development proceeded?
I think putting, putting in the infrastructure, you simply don't stop, as you know. At one point, for utilities and roads, you continue to do it, which your future development is going to be. So, that's what's happened. It, it's just a matter of development efficiency and ensuring that the infrastructure's in place down the road.
Okay.
Ms. Bumpke?
Mr. Payne, could you educate me a little bit? When you're referring to the commercial for Augustine South, there was a reference in there, as you know, to the daycare center. Is there not a demand for that anymore? I mean, my children are older, so I don't really look at daycare centers, but I don't see a lot over in that area when I'm in that area.
Again, very good question, and happy new year to you. It, that impacts Augustine South, which is quite a distance from Augustine Central. Again, had to be infrastructure put in place. It'd be kind of a standalone commercial facility there. So, it's just not feasible at this point in time for that to occur. No infrastructure in place. It's a significant distance from Augustine Central, and there's just no market for it.
Mr. Snellings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To follow up on Ms. Bumpke's question, the rest of the commercial, are there any specifics as to what type commercial? Are these going to be strip centers or?
Proffers are not very clear as to what type of commercial it would be. It just gives a square footage and that's it.
So, their obligation is just for the square footage, not for anything?
That's correct.
Different than what we normally see?
That's correct, other than the daycare that was mentioned.
Right, thank you.
Ms. Sellers?
Did I hear 630 was the, the delivery date on the fields? Did I hear a delivery date?
The retaining wall.
Retaining wall.
Right.
So, 630? When is the rest of the parks set to open up?
The current phase, six fields, should open for the St. Patrick's Day tournament in March.
In March, that's what I thought.
Yes, ma'am.
And then these fields are going to open in June. Are they going to be, and that's just a retaining wall? And so, from there, we'll try to have more fields. Are these, these are going to be natural grass then?
Yeah, Mr. Dayton can help. We don't, we won't be done that quickly with the next phase this, this summer.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Sellers, right now, we are planning to move forward. There was an early action today to authorize some funding to proceed with amending the design to incorporate the changes, the completions that have already been done. Our plan is to begin with that design. If the board would approve this concurrently with Colonial Forge's movement to, to go ahead and, and do their part of the retaining wall and the backfill in preparation for us coming in immediately after and completing the work this summer. So, the fields could be open, depending on, you know, grass growing and those kind of things, probably early 2017 to make sure that the turf gets stabilized, if that answers your question.
So, so it is a natural field?
It is planned to be a natural field. We are still working some possibilities to see if there's some opportunity for two artificial turf fields, but right now, our budget does not include sufficient funding for that option.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Mauer?
Just for clarification purposes, I was under the impression that daycare site, the three-acre daycare site, was on the Colonial Forge parcel. It was not?
It's on Augustine South.
Is it on Augustine South? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bumpke?
Yes, I was wondering if Mr. Dayton, we had a conversation earlier today, could just, because I was asking the question, what caused the need to have a retaining wall? So, if you could share that with us again?
Certainly, Ms. Bumpke. We have expanded the boundaries, the developable area on that entire site to the maximum extent practical. And in order to do that, we've had to install retaining walls pretty much at, at every border of every field. And that's to squeeze. There's not a lot of level land in Stafford, certainly not in this area. And we've tried to maximize the number of fields that we could get on that site that was presented as an opportunity. So, in order to stretch the fields out, get them full-size adult rectangular fields, we had to put retaining wall in on the end, and I think the maximum height of that is somewhere just over 20 feet, but not across the entire length.
So, if we had left the fields the way they were originally designed, we would not have had to do the retaining wall. Is that an accurate statement or no?
Well, no, that's not quite accurate, Ms. Bumpke. We always would have had to have retaining walls, but we could have shrunk the fields down and made them U-10s, you know, 10 and under, and that sort of thing, and lessen the size of the, the height of the retaining wall. So, there were options there, but we felt it was very important to, to maximize the potential of this, this particular complex, not only for Stafford residents, but also our ability to attract tournaments. Adding two more full-size fields on that site gives us an opportunity to really go after some, some, some big tournaments on rectangular fields.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
Any additional questions? Mr. Snellings?
Yes, Chairman. Mr. Dayton, Mr. Zaraf mentioned earlier that, no, I'm sorry, the county administrator mentioned earlier that to complete those fields with county funds only, we're going to have to pull money from another project.
Mr. Snellings, what the, the board has authorized, some, some bond funding, which we have pulled down. That total amount of funding, without any assistance from, from Augustine Homes, would allow us to complete those two fields only. With the contribution that Augustine Homes is, is proffering, we will be able to complete the three youth fields that are in, in just, it's still on the Embry Mill complex, but in a slightly different area. So, we'll be able to build that out to the full 11-field complex with the money that we already have on hand.
But if we don't get this money, then we're going to have to pull money from another project. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's, that's what Mr. Romanello was, was conveying, that we would be short somewhere between a three-quarter of a million and a million dollars.
Have we identified the project where the money would be pulled from?
Uh, no, sir, we have not.
Thank you.
No, sir, if I can, Mr. Chairman, that'll be part of the board's CIP conversations that we're about to enter into.
Any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public that? At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public that wishes to address the board will have the opportunity to do so. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address. After you do that, the green light will come on indicating you have three minutes. When you see the yellow light, you have one minute. When you see the red light, your time has expired. Anyone on my right wish to speak to this subject? Anyone on my left? No takers. Okay, I guess the applicant probably doesn't have any rebuttal. Okay, so at this time, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. It's in the Hartwood District. Mr. Snellings, what is your pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since there are a lot of questions by board members, I would like to defer this. I'll let the county administrator decide what's meeting. I know we have a very short meeting, our next meeting, either the next meeting or the second meeting in February. So I motion for deferral.
I have a motion of a second by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your vote for the deferral. Tally the vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next item up is number 27, Planning and Zoning. Authorize amended proffer conditions on one acre, Zone B2, to allow for outdoor display of vehicles, and authorize a minor conditional use permit amendment on Tax MAP Parcel 20-99, Zone B2 Urban Commercial in the Griffiths-Widewater District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Jeff Harvey. I'm the Director of Planning and Zoning. We have applications before us tonight is case number RC 15150963 and CUP 1515816. As the chairman mentioned, this would amend proffer conditions as well as CUP conditions for the outdoor display of vehicles. The property is located on the north side of Garrisonville Road near Center Street. The parcel involved is Parcel 20-99. It's a little over an acre in size. It's currently Zone B2 Urban Commercial and is located within our Highway Quarter Overlay District. This is an aerial photography view of the property. As you can see from the, the view, there are a number of adjacent properties that are fully developed specifically to the north, east, and west. We have an office building in this location, another office building in this location, and retail use here and here. These, this facility in this location is also an office complex, and recently the board can recall, in the fall, you approved a project called Stafford Village Center, which is located in this general vicinity. This is a, a street-side view of the property, so in case it, it helps jog some memories. There's an existing rental house on the property. It's for the most part undeveloped. You can see the entrance road to the office building that's located currently behind the site. The property was originally rezoned in 2003, proposed for vehicle sales. The conditions of the permit talk about the sale of custom and classic cars, and the overall intent at that point in time was that these cars would be provided on the property. There'd be a two-story building, and it would be, the display would be totally indoors, and the upstairs would be office space. Since that time, the economic conditions have changed, and the applicant has rethought their development project and has proposed some changes which necessitate these minor amendments. This is the generalized development plan. It was proposed in 2003, and it would not significantly change with these proposed amendments. The site showed a two-story, 12,000-square-foot building on the property. It's likely that there would be a one-story, 6,000-square-foot building under the new concept. The entrance is shown on the site GDP, which is likely going to be the same condition as we'd see in the future because of the limited frontage on the property as well as existing entrances to the east and to the west. One exception would be that, as you saw in the aerial photo, the property to the north has provided an interparcel connection. So properties to the east and west likely would not have these connections anymore. There is a stormwater management pond and a sign in the area to the east which prohibits that connection. Also, the area to the west, there's a retaining wall in a parking lot. So those sites have been fully developed since this property received its first zoning, and the changing conditions would warrant a little bit different GDP, but it'd be substantially the same. The current proffers limit uses to medium-intensity retail uses and motor vehicle sales, so the building could be used for more than just motor vehicle sales, depending upon how the applicant develops it out. The, as I mentioned earlier, the conditions and the proffers limited the display being indoors. Also, they would prohibit minor auto service and detailing, and then also would limit the second story to office space. And there were a number of discussions at the staff level that came along with that, converting from a two-story to a one-story building. The, also, as I mentioned, had an interparcel connector that was proffered to the west, which is no longer viable, and they are dedicating right away to accommodate widening of Garrisonville Road, and I'll get to that in a little bit more detail. There are currently also proffers with regard to the architectural treatment of the building, but staff will note, since this is in the Highway Quarter Overlay Zone, they also have to meet our neighborhood design standards within our comprehensive plan as part of their development project. That's something beyond what the proffers would regulate. The proffer amendment would not only allow the outdoor display of vehicles, but stipulate that they have to identify on their site plan where they're going to be physically located. That helps to address some of the concerns that we've seen in other car sales facilities where if they get a large-scale, a lot of inventory that they're using customer parking spaces as well as employee spaces for the inventory, and we want to make sure that as going forward, there's not going to be any of those types of conflicts. The current conditions for the use permit track very similar with the rezoning. However, they also talk about no carnival-style flags, banners, and lights, and also no outdoor storage of automobile parts. The current, current conditions also talk about complying with the Fire Prevention Code for storage of materials, that the buildings would have sprinklers, and that would be one of the things that's changed with the new conditions and talking to the fire marshal. A one-story building doesn't necessarily, in, in the way it's proposed to be laid out, doesn't bring it to the level where we think sprinklers would be advantageous from a fire protection standpoint. And then there's also current proffers or conditions that limit the test drives so they're not going through residential neighborhoods. Proposed changes to the conditions would be eliminating the outdoor display restriction, clarifying Condition 2 by allowing minor servicing and details inside the building, so they would have to construct a service bay for that purpose, and adding a condition specifically designating where the display vehicles be parked. As I mentioned about the sprinkler, if they do move forward with just a one-story building up to 6,000 square feet, they would not be required to have a sprinkler anymore. And then also, the, they would have to identify their, their loading space and ensure that there's safe drive aisles for delivery vehicles around that area. I will note that being in a Highway Quarter Overlay District, the zoning regulations require that loading spaces be screened from the public view, so more than likely, the loading space is going to be around the back of the building. And as you, if you can remember from the GDP, they have drive aisles that go around both sides and in the rear. So they'll have to make sure that those drive aisles are wide enough to accommodate a tow truck or some other vehicle that may be bringing in cars for sale. I mentioned the Garrisonville Road project. We're currently in the process of widening it from four to six lanes. There is acquisition of land in this area, including on this property. There is a proffer that they would contribute up to 15 feet for right-of-way. In looking at the design, we actually needed less right-of-way than was proffered, only 237 square feet, and I have a graphic that'll show that in more detail.
Ms. Sellers?
Did we not just condemn their property a couple weeks ago?
Yes, Ms. Sellers, the board agreed to it. In addition, in addition to the right-of-way, there also is necessary utility easements that have to be acquired, and, and construction easements that were beyond what was in the proffer. And I can let the applicant speak to the, the timing of when their situation evolved and, and the board's action.
Okay. I'd love to hear this.
Please continue.
This is the image that shows their property in relation to the Garrisonville Road widening project. The area that we need for public right-of-way ends up being right here. The rest of the colored areas along the road frontage are easements that the county needs to acquire for whether it's drainage easements, contemporary construction easements, or Verizon and various VDOT easements. And this is staff's attempt to superimpose the widening project on their general development plan. Again, you can see the proposed right-of-way is in this little area here compared to the red line, which is what was proffered, and then also the green line, which is the utility easements. The comprehensive plan recommends that this property is located in a commercial corridor, which suggests a community-serving retail, relatively small scale. We'll note that this current B2 zoning and this use could, could fit into that designation. However, it does in the comprehensive plan have specific recommendations for motor vehicle sales, specifically on Route 1 near Rameth Church Road and Garrisonville Road. Those are the two primary areas where the county wants to focus new motor vehicle sales. However, in this case, it was approved in 2003. Whether the board approves the amendments or not, it's not going to change the fact that they're authorized to have motor vehicle sales on their property. Staff is recommending approval. We feel that it's consistent with the overall land use development pattern in the comprehensive plan. It's been previously designated for such a use, even though it may not be consistent fully with the recommendations for where, where car lots would go. The planning commission is deliberations, recommended approval as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Moore?
So you, if you can go back to where it was originally proffered for specialty cars, it's on one of the slides?
Yes, ma'am.
How do we define that? So, you know, this group might be coming in for, with some beautiful cars, and it's not going to reduce the property values and whatnot, but in the future, I'd like to know that, should this be approved, that they would still be nice, pretty cars, I guess?
Yes. And the, the proffer said, the proffers say that the sale of used cars should be further limited to specialty or collector vehicles or custom vehicles offered in response to specific customer inquiry. So a collect, a custom vehicle is going to be something that's been specifically modified for a, a purpose, whether it's aesthetics or high performance. We would typically also see collector's vehicles as like an antique vehicle or, or a rare, hard-to-find vehicle. They're not specifically defined in the zoning ordinance, but if we receive the complaint that they're selling any, any other vehicle that you could find anywhere else in the county, then we'd have, probably have to sit down, talk to them, said, this is what you're committed to. This is what you have to have on your site.
And that continues forward with any other owner of this particular property?
Correct. It runs with the zoning of the property, so whoever owns the property has to abide by these conditions.
Mr. Snellings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'll save this question for the applicant. Maybe you know. I don't understand if you're going to have collector cars, specialty cars, that you want to house them outside in the weather. I just don't understand how that's going to work, but I'll ask the applicant that. The one proffer that I do question is test drives through residential neighborhoods. I don't believe that's enforceable. Based on experience, as long as those vehicles are properly tagged, I don't think you can restrict where they go.
Mr. Snellings?
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think you can.
You're, you're, you are correct. This would be a very difficult condition for us to enforce, that, that we'd basically have to follow somebody around leaving the site to-
Right.
-see where they drive.
And then you'd have to make sure it was that used car lot, not another one up the street, and so it would be very difficult.
Yes, sir. But that was the sentiment at the time. They felt that they wanted to make sure that this proposed use minimized any community impacts.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, with the applicant like to address the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Clark Lemme, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This was the application that you all adjusted your fee schedule for a few months ago, very minor adjustments to both a conditional use permit and the proffer requested. And as you, as you can see, the staff report is consolidated rather than two. You have one staff report, and now that you're familiar with the, with the application a bit more, you can see that there is a great deal of duplication between the proffer amendment application and the conditional use permit application. This was, this was originally zoned, and I represented, Mr. Mabudian, way back in, in 2003. And the, the concept at that point was to do an upscale car sales dealership that would special, as the, as the proffer indicates, specialty and custom vehicles. And the idea at that point was to construct a large showroom for these, for the display of these vehicles in a large building. The, the economy took another direction after that. And there are actually two reasons, two economic reasons that have led to the request that some cars be displayed outdoors, and I say some in response to Mr. Snellings' question, and I'll come back in, in a moment to that. But, but two things have happened. Number one, the overall economy has changed to the point that the demand for vehicles has changed somewhat. The applicant remains committed to the concept of doing specialty, custom vehicles, special orders, and this is not a large parcel. After the condemnation, we're talking about about a one-acre parcel here. Somehow, this is a parcel that got left out of all of the development that, that went on all around this. And Mr. Mabudian has, has owned this for a number of years, and it's the site of, some of you may have driven by there, I'm sure, the lovely yellow-ish residential house on the property that is frequently the site of signage during political campaigns because of its, its nice elevation and visibility. But something, something better can be done with that property. I don't think it's any secret that 610, the face of 610, particularly with what was rezoned across the street, is going to change in the years to come. But there are a number of interim uses that are appropriate until the, until the pattern is, is in full force and effect, and, and, and this is one of them. Now, the other, the other problem, the other economic problem, in addition to the overall economy and, and what you can sell right now, has to do with the cost of the building. A building large enough to house the offices for this operation and the vehicles that we're all going to be inside. That's a, that's a pretty good, good-sized building, and construction costs have gone up also. So what this owner seeks to do is to display a, at least a portion of the cars outside. There will still be a building on the property, but if you looked at the GDP, you're looking at, and, and as Mr. Harvey indicated, we're going to have to come back and specify what spaces are used for what when we get to site plan. But right now, by my count, there are about, I didn't, I don't believe I counted the, the handicap spaces, but there are 50 spaces on the property. Now, according to your ordinance, if he has a 6,000-foot building, three spaces per 1,000 feet are going to have to be reserved for those that are going to be used, using the building. They cannot be used for car sales. So by my count, at a maximum, that leaves 32 spaces. Now, the inside of the building, there are several ways to protect the vehicles, and this is, this is done at a number of dealerships. Number one, you can cover them outside. There are specialty covers for certain vehicles. Of course, many of our new dealers, new car dealers, leave cars in the open all the time without any protection. But in cases where such protection is warranted, there is the possibility of, of casings that would fit over cars, but also there is the possibility of you, of, of some of the cars being located still inside. That is not a, that is not precluded here. What the owner is simply trying to avoid is a structure that would have to house all of his vehicles inside, inside a building. So that is the, that is the revised concept, and it requires the single adjustment that Mr. Harvey has discussed, and that is the change in the proffer so that there can be an outdoor display of the vehicles and a corresponding change in the conditions to the conditional use permit. Now, what's this going to look like? As Mr. Harvey indicated- As Mr. Harvey indicated, you have some pretty good controls there. In addition to a, a proffer that talks about the materials that would be utilized, you have, this is in the highway overlay corridor, so he is going to have to comply with the neighborhood design standards. I believe one of those features is that you've got to have the same materials all the way around the building. You can't just have a facade out front that looks nice and then something else on the, on the sides. So, your own ordinance is, is going to require that, that this be an attractive building. The site is going to have to be designed so that all the spaces that are used for outdoor display are on the site plan. One question that Ms., I think it was Ms. Maher came up, what is a specialty vehicle? You know, I suppose if we, if we worked a little at it, we could come up with a, a pretty coherent definition. We didn't, from the standpoint of the dealer, he didn't want to bind himself to a point that there was no flexibility there. But I think it's safe to say that a specialty vehicle is one out of the ordinary. And I think Mr. Harvey answered the, the question of enforceability fairly well also. You know, while the county doesn't have zoning police, if there are vehicles that are sold that don't fit one of these definitions arguably, then that would be a violation of the proffer, and there would have to be a corrective action. What the, the current owner has one other dealership in Baltimore. It is also used cars, but has worked with the specialty cars and thought this would be a good market for that. And given the size of the parcel, it seemed to be something that worked. This is, this is a, this is a guy that sells cars. That's what he does. He's the property owner, and, and that's his livelihood. So he seeks to, to carry on that, that profession here in the 610 location. I think those are the, the, the main issues that I wanted to cover. I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I think that the bottom line here is that you get a building that has to look decent, has to look good under your own standards. It's a limited operation, and given the current economic situation, even as it, as it has improved, the owner sincerely believes that this is what's necessary in order for him to carry on the business at this location.
Mr. Cavalier?
Mr. Lemming, when you were doing some earlier ciphering with the parking spaces, you threw out a number, I believe, 32. Now, what would you be willing to proffer as the maximum number of outdoor displayed vehicles?
Well, I think it's controlled by the ordinance. Mr. Mabudian? I'm going to ask Mr. Mabudian to come up here before I commit into something that he can't live. Just by my math, math, I think that if you have 50 spaces, which is what's shown currently on the GDP, and you're going to have to reserve three per thousand square feet for the building, which is still shown on the GDP as a 6,000-square-foot building. Mary, if you would, come up and just introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Murad Mabudian. I'm the owner of the property.
And Mary, the question Mr. Cavalier has asked is, would you be willing to limit, your GDP shows approximately 50 spaces here, would you be willing to say, "I'm not going to use any more than X number of spaces"? You don't show where they're going to be, but would just numerically?
I'll work, I'll, I'll be fine with that if it comes to that, sure.
Well, but I think he's looking for a number, yes.
Can we do all 50?
Well, no, you can't do all 50, because you've got to, you've got to have handicap spaces, and you've got to have spaces for your employees, and you only got 50 spaces.
So can we do just the ones in the front and the, and these here?
Well, if you did the, if you did the front, that would be nine and 10, 19 plus 15. That'd be, that'd be no more than 34 spaces. I'm not sure he can do that, but, but 34 is pretty close to what my math.
Your, your original math came out to 32, so this exceeds that number from the requirement.
Only because he's specific ones.
But this depends on the 6,000-square-foot building, right?
If you have a 6,000-square-foot building, then you're only going to get 32 spaces that you could possibly use.
So 6,000 is going to be about two per thousand?
Yeah, three per thousand.
Three per thousand, sure, so. So can we do two per thousand?
Well, that, well, he wants you, you've got 50 spaces shown there. He wants you to say that you will not have outdoor display in any more than 32 of those spaces.
32 should be fine.
So 32 is your final answer?
On the 6,000. Now, if, if we have a smaller building, will that, will that still stay at the 32?
Well, not if you, not if you agree to 32.
What I'm looking for is a, is a number that we can start, start with here.
I guess you backed me to the corner.
Well, I would have thought that you would have thought about this in terms of how many vehicles you want to have. How many vehicles, how many vehicles do, do you think you would house inside the, the 6,000-square-foot building?
No more than a dozen.
Yeah, that probably wouldn't fit more than 12.
Okay. So even if, yeah, so.
So you'd have an inventory of 42?
42, sure. So can we do 30?
Well, I, you know, this is by no means my only call here, but I just thought maybe you would want to proffer some number.
Are you, are you, are you willing to say that there would be no more than 32 outside spaces used for display?
Sure. I'll be okay with that. It's better than what I have now.
Zero, right? We have zero now, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you don't have all monster trucks out there versus, you know, go-karts, you know, the size constraint.
We're not planning to do monster cars.
Okay, I understand.
Sounds like he's okay with 32.
Okay, thank you.
Outdoor spaces. Okay, I'll stand by in case there's other math that we have to do.
Mr. Harvey, did you have something to add?
I'm sorry.
The proffers for?
Yes, uh-huh. Any more questions before I start making adjustments here?
I don't see any.
All right, I will.
We'll let you work on that while we conduct the public hearing. How's that sound? At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public that wishes to address the board will have the opportunity to do so. When you step to the podium, please state your name and address. After you do that, the green light will come on indicating three minutes, the yellow light indicates one minute, and the red light indicates your time has expired. I do have two speaker cards for this agenda item. Jennifer Wieners?
Jennifer.
Okay. We'll go in reverse. Mr. Whitford?
I'm Michael Whitford of Westcott Place here in Fredericksburg, well, Fredericksburg Stafford in Ms. Baumke's district. Members of the board, Mr. Romanello, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm Michael Whitford. I work for John Properties, where the property managers and owner representatives of Garrisonville Holdings, the owners of 450 Garrisonville Road, and I'm here tonight to speak against granting consideration to the proposed amendments to 458 Garrisonville Road, also known as Tax Map 20-99. As the neighbors, we have serious concerns about the proposed changes to the property, specifically the outdoor displays of used cars for sale. It's our understanding that there is, as we've discussed already, permits for indoor showroom sales, and we certainly have no objection to that use at all, but there is a substantive and qualitative difference between showing used cars in a showroom and showing used cars on a parking lot. Broadly categorized, our objections fall into traffic flow, parking visibility, and the nature, general nature of the proposed changes to the area. In terms of the traffic flow, we believe that approving these amendments would cause a hazardous traffic flow around the property that could impact us. We don't believe there's sufficient space along Garrisonville Road for prospective customers to safely move, merge right and turn into the parking lot as it's currently proposed. And due to the proximity of Center Street and the traffic signal there, which is about 275 feet from the proposed entrance to the lot, we don't think that there's also a safe area which customers could turn out onto Garrisonville Road with. Parking is another concern, parking in parking spaces, and how many will be used. That was already discussed, and I won't touch on that, but we certainly would want to know how many of the, you know, how many of the 50 parking spaces would be used for car display. We have concern about visibility as well. 458 Garrisonville Road is bounded on its east side by our property and a protected wetland. The wetland contains some tall trees and growing large grasses, which can obscure the approach to the property, to 458 Garrisonville Road. In addition to the protected wetland, Garrisonville Road curves to the northwest as it does approach this property, and the trees, coupled with the curve, coupled with people traveling at speed on Garrisonville Road, which I'm sure we all know happens, can cause some serious visibility issues as you approach that site. Final concern is how the proposed development fits into the area that has already been developed up to this point. The section of Garrisonville Road between Travis Lane and Center Street is characterized by retail development in small strip or larger commercial buildings. The north side of the road houses medical, consulting, professional offices. On the south side, you have restaurants, chain stores, and other medical facilities. We think that even a small used car lot in the middle of this surrounding development might be visually unappealing, potentially diminish property values, and by extension, tax values in the area. So we are not in favor of the property, mainly because it's out of character in that area. So for the reasons I've discussed, traffic flow, parking, visibility, and that, character of that stretch of Garrisonville Road, we respectfully request that you not adhere, not give this consideration proposal. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Jennifer Wieners.
I live in Alexandria, but my business address is 450 Garrisonville Road. I represent Advanced Fine and Pain. The owner is Dr. Thomas Reilly, who is one of the owners of the 450 Garrisonville Road building. Everything which Mr. Whitford just very nicely put out are his concerns as well, specifically the two of the outdoor displays. When we think of car dealerships and displays, we think of flags and signs and the big air things, particularly that bend in the road that Mr. Whitford did speak to, people at speed. Any more visual distraction on that part of the road, we just feel would be a danger to our patients, our staff, our providers, general people just passing by our office. The second is obviously the visual outdoor car sales. Again, bright colors, signs, people checking out what I'm sure will be nice-looking vehicles. It's an added distraction that I just don't think is appropriate in that part of the street. We just feel it's a safety concern, and being medical, obviously, one of our biggest things is patient safety, staff safety, our providers. So that's our concern. We're opposed to the amendments, but we appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's all the speaker cards I have. Anybody else from the audience on my right wish to speak? Anybody on the left? Hearing none, would the applicant like to issue a rebuttal?
I think some of the questions raised have been addressed. I did amend the, the proffer to state that no more than 32 outside parking spaces shall be utilized for display, and Mr. Mabudian has initialled that. And to remind everyone of the process here at site plan, they're going to have to designate which spaces are which. In addition, as far as the entrance is concerned, they're going to have to get an entrance permit. So whatever concerns, whatever safety concerns are, VDOT is going to have a look at, all of that will be dealt with in the context of the site plan. This is a commercial parcel, zoned commercially. You, you may have noticed that in the original proffers, there was a requirement that the applicant, Mr. Mabudian, seek access to the, to the west, an interparcel connection. Well, that was not granted. So, I mean, the entrance to the property is going to be generally as shown on the generalized development plan, but if there's any danger to it, VDOT's not going to give him an entrance permit. But whatever happens with this property commercially, there's going to be an entrance. Now, traffic, the, if, if I have 32, or maybe if I include indoors, if I have 42 or 44 cars for sale, I don't think that you're going to see a, a grand flow of, of vehicles and, and customers in there on a, on a regular basis, particularly if, and this is responsive to one of the concerns, particularly if these are specialty or custom vehicles. Largely, people are going to see, come to see a particular car here, not coming to browse, as might be the case. And I'm trying to think about some of the, some of the wonderful used car dealerships that we see up and down Route 1, which is, this is not planned to be. This is controlled by your highway overlay corridor and the nature of the vehicles that would be sold here. But I seldom see a whole bunch of people visiting any of those car dealerships over on Route 1, and how many of them do we have up and down Route 1 there? Quite a few of them. But I'm not aware of any major traffic problems there. And I think that whatever might be perceived here would be further limited by the nature of the business and the number of vehicles that would actually be available on the property. Flags, signage, that sort of thing is prohibited. That's not something you can do under your, under the conditional use permit. So, the original concept was to have an upscale car dealership here with a certain kind of specialty and a custom item.
Ms. Sellers had a question?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, looking at, okay, looking at your, the GDP, and then looking at what's already there, do you have to proffer a GDP? Because your GDP doesn't make sense with that back parking lot for the doctor's office and stuff that's back there.
You, you mean the parking spaces along the back?
Yes.
The back row?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
How are you, right, if I, if I, there's a parking lot back there, there's an interparcel connector back there, so how's your, how's that, how's that going to work?
I'm not sure. I, I understand you, there is no-
I'm just trying to figure out how this is going to look.
But there is no interparcel. What, what do you mean an interparcel connection?
Do you have a picture of it, Jeff?
I'm looking at the GDP.
She's looking at the aerial. There, there is kind of a, there's like a stubbed driveway. In our book, anyway.
Yes, okay. Yeah, yeah, I mean, if the, if the, if the owners, and I think you just heard from some of them, if they would permit an interparcel connection back there, then, you know, that, that would certainly be another way to enhance the, the traffic flow, but that's not something that could be done as a matter of right. And there was a requirement initially that this be done, or looked into to the west, and that didn't materialize. So, you know, I, I wouldn't be, we know that it can't happen to the west because that has been now built up. There is a, a buffer there to the east. There is the environmental issue that was referenced in Mr. Harvey's presentation. We don't, we certainly would not have any problem with approaching the people that have just spoken and asking if they, if we can access that. Now, bear in mind that, you know, interparcel connections are something that the county can require when someone comes in for some kind of zoning or discretionary review, but if the owners back there don't want to grant an interparcel connection, I don't believe there's any way to force that to happen.
I, I guess my concern is when I'm looking at this, it, it doesn't even fit together because you have your GDP with the, with the parking lot there, so there's not going to be any, any connection between this back parking lot, which I don't know if you should because you don't want a semi-truck going back there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, it seems to me they're two separate issues. The, the GDP shows a row of parking at the back portion of the parcel, and you're talking about the parking that is shown for the adjacent, for the use to the north, correct? I mean, there, there are parking spaces that show, you know, actually coming all the way up, it appears to be to the property line. That's what you mean, right? And is the question whether or not that can be utilized as an interparcel connection?
I don't know. I don't know, Clark.
I mean, I tell you this, what we can, what we can do, you know, he can-
I don't want to know. My, my concern is that the way you guys have this situated, right, you've come to us for reconsideration of this proffers, well, something's back there now. There's an office space back there, so why wouldn't you make, change the GDP to actually fit with the way it looks? And, and then on the front parcel, we've condemned part of your property, and so some of the buffer's going away.
Yeah, let's, can we go back to the, the GDP and the overlay that Jeff had shown? Um, and let me address this twofold here. You know, what you, what you see are easements, so the street buffer is not precluded within those easement areas necessarily at all. They have to provide a buffer. Now, do, and you see the, the red line along the front, that's the actual right-of-way line. So the buffers that are shown are to the north of that right-of-way line. The green line is the proposed easement line. Okay, so, I mean, we're talking about utility, probably Verizon easements. Now, if, if that's the question on the front, on the back, if you want, if you want us to do the same thing that we did to the west, we certainly could agree to try to obtain an interparcel connection to the north. I mean, you know, it, it simply would mean the elimination of one- I mean, you know, it simply would mean the elimination of one or two of those spaces that is shown on the back of the parcel. So, it wouldn't be difficult to make a connection back there. But whether we would be given permission, I think, would be the issue. And that's basically the same scenario that was set up previously because we had been asked to look at the west and see whether that could work as well. Basically, what you have is one parcel here that's been built up around it. And it's one parcel that needs to have its own development plan. And the extent to which it can be coordinated with any of the adjacent properties, I think it may well be that that train has left the station.
Mr. Cavalier, hear the question?
Yeah, I think it seems pretty evident that the adjacent property owner isn't going to be willing to grant that access.
I'd be a little surprised.
On the north side, so, and the other two sides are pre, it's not, it's not possible with the way it's set. So, the only access is off Garrisonville Road. Now, but my question is, under the original two-story plan with the 12,000 square feet, and then that would have been all automobiles on the bottom.
Offices on top.
And offices on top. Here, you're going to have to have a mix on the bottom. So, you're telling me you can get 12 vehicles on the bottom floor? But how many, under the old scenario, could you put on just the bottom floor with it being offices upstairs?
You know the answer to that question?
So, you'd have more floor space available.
Would you have displayed indoors under the old plan? You know, if you're looking at the comparable number of parking spaces, and bearing in mind that you're indoors and you have to get in, there has to be doors, but it does not appear if we move these parking spaces up into the building. I don't think, at least at that width, that you probably could get a double row of them. If you could, it'd be very tight. But certainly, no more it would appear than 24?
Well, yeah, and that's the number that I'm trying to ascertain here for comparative purposes. How many, if we can get, let's just say 24, 24 inside versus a total of 44 inside and outside is really what we're looking at? If 24 is the number, which I'm not sure where it is.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be good to know that number.
Yeah, that's just an eyeball. And I don't think, I don't think that Mr. Maboudian ever really got that far with his plans to calculate how many vehicles he could actually cram into that 6,000-square-foot building there. I'm sorry, cram was not the right word. Situate. But it appears that it would be somewhere in the vicinity of 24, 28, somewhere in that vicinity indoors.
Okay, were you finished with your rebuttal? We kind of interrupted you with some questions there.
I think that, yes, I think I, I mean, I think that the responses are simply that this is not a typical used car lot, and you are, the appearance is largely governed by your neighborhood design standards, which are required under your comp plan for the H-COT anyway.
Okay. Mr. Milde?
I can imagine that, this is discussion time?
Not yet.
A motion?
Let me close the public hearing if there are no more questions. I haven't done that yet. Okay.
All right, thank you.
At this time, we'll close the public hearing and bring you back to the board. DeGriffus-Widewater District. Mr. Cavalier, what's your pleasure?
I think there's a lot of unanswered questions at this point. I would like to know that number on the inside storage unit because, let's face it, this can be used, this site can be used as a used car dealership regardless of what we say here today. It's just the numbers involved. And the numbers are going to tell us a lot about the traffic flow and the safety concerns and all those things that were brought up by the neighboring parcel. So, it would be good for me to hear the clarity on those numbers and what the capacities are inside and outside, and perhaps see if you want to rethink, it kind of sprung that on you, on how many spots outside. So, I think that, I don't, I, you know, I think some of these things are just 11th-hour decisions here, and I think that some consideration probably needs to be given. And then, you know, we can, we can discuss if those changes merit taking it to the adjacent property owners to see what their reaction is to it. And perhaps there is a compromise here. But I don't see that yet because I see too many unresolved questions. So, at this time, I'd like to move to defer.
Do you have a date in mind for that?
I don't have a specific date. I'd like to leave that open-ended.
Okay. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Maurer, discussion. Ms. Milde?
I don't want to put off my thoughts here. I'll be more direct. This is, you are right across the street from the biggest rezoning we've ever done. The highest and best use that we've ever seen on Route 610 or anywhere really for that matter in Stafford County. A man who is trying to attract a new grocery store like we've never seen before, a theater like we've never seen before. I can imagine, I just got here a few years after 2003, but maybe Jack remembers, or Gary remember, that the reason why you were, I'm guessing, I'm guessing that the reason why we approved indoor auto sales is because we don't want outdoor auto sales. The reason why we have a conditional use permit on auto, outside auto sales is because someone, somewhere before I got here, recognized that Route 1 looked like crap because there's one after the other. And you're right, there's not a lot of traffic on them, and you can't get rid of them. They stay there forever. You have a nice green field there, and the highest and best use is not a used car dealership. And that's just my opinion, and that is what we do up here, is make those decisions as bad as it may seem to a person who owns the property. But it shouldn't be a secret, you've obviously been fighting with it for a long time. I can't imagine anyone driving out of the Rock Hill District or Widewater District in the morning is thinking to themselves, "God, you know what we need around here is one more used car dealership." They're wanting something else. And I, there's no way that I'm going to support another used car dealership in North Stafford. I have been consistent about it the whole time I've been on this board. I let one expand in South Stafford because it made sense, the district supervisor, and it was already there, frankly, that was the reason. And one got biased in Widewater. If you want to know what a little car dealership like this looks like, there's one right next to Aquia Glass that just, the Aquia Glass just closed down, so I guess, I'm sure, I hope there's no correlation, but the little house, the cute little house next to Aquia Glass on Route 1 is now a car dealership limited to 25 or 27 cars. And that's what it looks like. It's pavement and cars. And I just don't know how that, how that is, that's what we want to put on Route 610 across from hopefully another great grocery store and movie theater. So, now you know where I stand. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Sellers?
Well, I'm not going to be as harsh as Paul, but I do kind of agree with what he's saying. I don't know if this is, this is the best use of the area, but I'm willing to sit here and talk to you guys. A comment that you made that I really disagree with is that it needs to conform the extent at which it can fit. No, you guys are the last to develop. You need to make it fit with the rest of what's going on there. I disagree with that. And you have a conditional use permit that you've been approved for, or a proffer that you need to adhere to. And I do agree with Paul. I think you guys need to relook at this GDP and figure out a way to make it work. Another concern that I have is if you look on Garrisonville Road, this is going to be, you're not going to be able to turn left there anymore, but you're going to have three driveways very close together along Garrisonville Road with the Winks Place, whatever that's called. Then you have going back into the medical building, office building with that auto something there. And then now this, you're going to have a delivery truck going there. We really got to think about that. How are you going to access this? Because one more driveway along Garrisonville Road is going to back the traffic up, which is problematic, which is why we're widening it. So, I think you guys need to really take a look at that and figure out how you're going to get into it. And an afterthought can't be an interparcel connector. You're going to have to figure out a way, in my opinion, as somebody who drives Garrisonville Road daily, how you're going to, how you're going to work through that. I can't imagine VDOT's going to approve that anyways, those driveways so close together. But, so those are some of my comments to you guys before you bring it back is, take a look at that.
Mr. Cavalier, give me the last word.
Lest anyone go away from here thinking that we can stop this from being a used car lot. You're wrong. It is a used car lot zoning right now. So, as passionate as Mr. Milde is against further used car lots, this is a designated used car lot. I just want to be clear on that. We're not voting against a used car lot. We're voting the use of the, your used car lot.
Go ahead, Mr. Milde.
It's inside of a building. That is not a lot. I just want, I don't want, let's not send the wrong message. I don't, I don't think I was misleading anyone. If you put it in a building, I don't consider that a lot. It's a used car building. Totally enclosed in a building looks completely different than cars.
Not a lot.
Okay, we have a motion to defer with a second. Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to one. Next up is Item 28. Planning and zoning authorize conditional use permit to allow 190-foot telecommunications tower on 71 acres zoned A1 and authorize a lease agreement for a telecommunications facility and ancillary compound on Tax Mac parcel 39-26B in the Aquia District. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is for the reference conditional use permit 15150891 and a lease agreement between the county and Milestone Communications for a communication facility built on the property known as the county landfill. As the chairman mentioned, the screen describes the permit request as well as the applicant being represented by Donahue and Sterns. And the primary purpose is for Verizon Wireless to be located on top of the tower. As the board may recall, we currently have an agreement between the county and Milestone Communications that they will market certain county-owned properties for the potential purpose of locating telecommunications facilities. As such, there would be income shared between the county and Milestone as part of that lease agreement. This is a view of the property from an aerial photo. As you can see, it's adjacent to the active areas of the landfill. It's on property owned by the county and as well as the city of Fredericksburg. It's accessed through the landfill complex. The surrounding properties are primarily rural in nature with large lot, a single-family home-type development. The surrounding zoning is A1 agricultural, and the comprehensive plan for this area recommends agricultural and rural activities for future land use. This is a image that shows the penetration rate for the new cell tower, blue being the strongest signal, red being less strong, and then the white where there is no signal. This site would primarily serve customers coming to the area of the landfill as well as people that ride to VRE. And the VRE line generally follows through this corridor. And this is an image of that same area without the coverage. So, you can see there is a substantial community benefit by having a tower at this location.
I drive it every day. You know how much I like to talk on my phone.
This is an inset drawing of the access to the tower site. It is indicated in the drawing to the left, they'll be using internal travel lanes that already exist at the landfill and would connect in to this overall location, this vicinity of that large 300-acre parcel. This is a typical drawing of what the compound may look like with fencing around the perimeter, screening if necessary, as well as the tower in the middle and potential locations for equipment shelters. This diagram shows one equipment shelter, but there's also a possibility for a number of other carriers that could be located on the tower. This is the diagram or typical section side view of the tower. The Verizon Wireless antenna would be located at the top elevation where four other sites could be potentially located for other carriers for that area. This is a photo simulation of how the tower may look from different locations. This is the view from the Civil War Park. This is a view from the landfill area itself, and then also from a home at Montague Loop. The conditions for this type of permit are fairly standard, but we haven't seen one in a while, so I'll walk you through some of the details. It's limiting to one telecommunications facility on the property, identifies the portion of the property that's owned by the county and the R Board. Also stipulates it'll be lattice-style construction and cap it at 190 feet. The importance of the height limitation is that FAA has a different standard for towers that are above 200 feet and that has to go through some additional review. And by having that limitation, that gives the county some control over how the tower's going to look and how it's designed. Also, they have to conform to the general development plan, as you saw earlier. There was some discussion during the staff review of this tower proposal. We got commentary from the airport authority that they had some concerns about helicopters using this general area as their approach for the airport. But we note that under 200 feet, they're not required to have these types of towers lit or striped. However, they asked that there be, that they be lit and striped in accordance with FAA standards, provided that the FAA permits them. We also had a recommendation based on information that we have determined that it'd be better to have a white strobe on top of the tower rather than a red strobe where you see in some areas. The red strobe has more of a tendency to attract birds, which again is another problem for the landfill as well as the airport, and we do not want to attract birds in this area because of potential air traffic hazards. There's also limitations that we're not going to be having any signs on top of the tower. So, it can't be, have some unexpected use in advertising. Also, we require for a standard condition that if the tower ceases use, that the owner of the tower must post a security and have that tower removed within a specified period of time, so we don't have an ISO remaining for the community. Also, upon building permit approval, and they'd have to post a letter of credit for the removal based on engineered cost estimates. We mentioned about the tower having five carriers that can be facilitated on it. And then also, they need to provide us with the as-built plan once it's completed and ensure that it complies with all the conditions of the permit. There's always been some concerns about potential interference of frequencies, and the conditions stipulate they cannot interfere with the regional airport or our 911 system. Also, if need be, that they would provide us with leased space on the tower for, and on the ground for a period of 30 years for the county's operation specifically for 911. And then if building permits aren't obtained within five years from dated approval, the use permit would expire. And then the standard condition, if there's violations, that the board can revisit it and revoke the permit or modify the conditions. The Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed use permit pursuant to R1607, and also recommend that the board adopt a lease agreement pursuant to R1624.
Any questions? Okay. I'm going to skip the applicant since it's kind of us, even though it's Milestone. That's okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Where any member of the public that wishes to address the board will have the opportunity to do so. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address. After you do so, the green light will indicate you have three minutes, the yellow light, one minute, and the red light, your time has expired. Anyone in the chamber who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, we'll come back to the board and close the public hearing. This is in the Aquia District.
Approval of R1607.
We have a motion for R1607 by Mr. Milde.
There was a public, a public meeting down there, and no one came in opposition at Rouseford Building.
And it was seconded by Ms. Sellers.
But let me tell you something interesting that did happen. That was an unintended consequence of our agreement with Milestone, and I'm obviously going to support this and make the motion. But there was a, there's a family that lives right next to where this tower's going that had been working with a carrier, and they were going to get, they were going to get the tower, and they were excited about it. And she's widower, she's a widow. She was looking forward to the income. Somehow, our deal happened to be, county property right next to it was less expensive for the cell phone people. And so, Mrs. Miller isn't getting her tower that she thought she was going to get. And it's just interesting, and it's something I didn't think about when we, and I don't know how we could have undone it, but I thought I'd let you know that's exactly what happened here. Get this tower's going within a few feet of where it was going to go. It's just a matter of it's going on county land instead of private land. Thank you.
Any other comment? Any other comment? Okay, we have motion on table, it's been properly seconded, please cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Motion for R16-24.
As a matter of fact, that's exactly what I was getting ready to-
There we go. Moved by Mr. Milde. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Sellers. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, just to specify, Mr. Harvey said the revenue would go to the county. The revenue from the lease agreement will go to the R Board.
Good, that'll help. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, having no more business, meeting is adjourned.